Good evening and welcome to the April 17th, 2025 Board of Trustees Meeting and Budget Workshop. If you will please stand in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and it looks like we have trustee Mitchell Jennings and Ratan and myself. We do have a quorum by the hair of our chinny chin chins tonight. And I'm going to turn it over at this time. We have some incredible special guests here tonight. We're really glad you're here, and so I'm going to turn it over to President Corb so we can talk about these great people.
Thank you. So we do have some exciting celebrations tonight, and we just want to make sure that we are able to recognize them. The first is Lisa Elsner. Lisa is, has been an employee in the dining services area for 35 years, and she is also an athlete. She competed last year, or last year, last month in Turin, Italy. And she competed in her fifth Special Olympics World Winter Games and won the gold medal in Alpine skiing.
Woo!
Yes. And so Lisa will talk just a little bit about her experience with us, but I want to give you just a little bit more information. She competed in Special Olympic World Games in 1993, 1985, 1989, and 2001, in which she medaled in swimming, figure skating, and speed skating. She was inducted into the Kansas Special Olympics Hall of Fame in 1990 and has won gold, silver, and bronze awards in state, national, and world games. I wasn't supposed to read this, but I was afraid I was going to miss something, and so I thought I have to go ahead and read it. She's had a chance to meet the governor as part of her experience, and Lisa is not slowing down. In fact, since she got back from Italy, she has already competed in two half marathons.
My goodness!
So wherever, wherever she goes next, you can bet that we will all be rooting for her. Lisa, we are so proud of you and all of your accomplishments, and I've never been that close to an Olympic gold medal before. But that is very exciting. So would you like to come to the podium and just tell us just a little bit about your experience?
I loved Italy, by the way. And it was interesting to be in Italy, and I really enjoyed winning the gold.
Awesome. Do you have any, any questions, any comments for Lisa? Uh, trustee Ratan.
You've done several sports. Which one is your favorite?
My favorite is swimming, actually.
Thank you.
Somebody else, trustee Jennings?
So have you always done, have you always been a sports person?
I've always been a sports person.
I'm just overwhelmed with what you've done.
Any other questions? Trustee Mitchell.
I'm curious how someone trains for Alpine skiing events in Kansas. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Um, I actually like, I actually kind of like to swim, and I do like to ski a lot, too. I practice a lot for skiing. I had a coach help me out for skiing when I was going to go to World Games in Russia, but that got canceled, so I got to go to Italy instead. Yeah.
I was told that the Alpine skiing was the most difficult to train.
It was difficult for me, too.
I bet. Any other questions?
And I train mostly in Snow Creek, at Snow Creek in Weston, Missouri. Yeah.
Now they get to say that they train Olympic gold medalists, so you're going to have some competition. Well, Lisa, my question was, how young were you when you first got started in doing any kind of athletics? Because I am in awe of-
Eight years old when I first started Special Olympics.
Very good. Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for being here, and if we can all just get real close to that goal, you know, and just sniff of what it's like. We would love to see-
That's it right there.
Perfect. I think we're going to take some pictures in a minute. Is that right? Is that a plan? Okay. Should we do that now, or would you like to do that after our next presentation?
I would like to do whatever you would like to do.
I think we should go through, we are winging it tonight, ladies and gentlemen. Can you tell? Our, our chair is not here, and I'm filling in as best as I can. So why don't we do both presentations, and then we'll do all the pictures and what?
Okay.
Okay. So Lisa, if you don't mind, if you'll have a seat for just a minute.
Thank you for letting me speak about Italy a little bit.
Yes, thank you for being here. Okay, so next, we would like to recognize our women's basketball national champions. They are the NJCAA Division II National Champions. So I would like to introduce Coach Conrad. He will come and speak to us a little bit about the team and what's happening with them.
I'm glad you said we're winging it a little bit.
I'm Laura, so this is, this makes the whole thing, I'm in the wrong seat.
That's kind of what, that's kind of what, as you can tell, I'm winging it.
I'll answer whatever you call me, no problem.
Appreciate you guys having us here and, and the recognition. It is really, really hard to do this. We've had some incredible teams over the years that had some amazing players that weren't able to finish this job. We got to, I think, three national championship games and just came up short and didn't get it done. It's very, very difficult. You have to catch some breaks. You've got to be a little bit lucky. You've got to be really good, and then things have to fall into place. And all those things came into place this year for this basketball team. We were able to beat the number five team in the country in the Elite Eight, and then we beat the number one team in the country in the Final Four. They had a 59-game winning streak. They were, they were, they were pretty much considered to be unbeatable. It was a team out of Iowa that won it last year, actually beat us in the national championship game, Kirkwood. And we beat them, and then we beat number, I don't remember if Pima was four in the, three in the country. I can't remember, but they were really good. They, they were, they were phenomenal, and so our kids just, they just got it done. I want to introduce the three, we brought the three kids that made the all-tournament team. I'm going to first start with the freshman, the young lady here, very young, Leila Scott. So Leila was the MVP of the national tournament as a freshman. She put us on her back in the, really in a couple of games. With the championship game, it really kind of stands out to me in the fourth quarter. I think she had 10 points in the fourth quarter, made some huge plays down the stretch. And Leila's, what I love, what's interesting about Leila is her sister is a sophomore for us and has been our point guard for two years. And when I, when I recruited Leila, her sister Talia, I made sure, because we went to eat somewhere over in, was it Raytown? Where did we eat over there by the stadium? Chili. Anyway, we went to eat, and I, and I knew that we had this one coming up, so I made sure that they brought her along. And start planting that seed for the following year, and then we ended up getting her. I knew what kind of special player that we had. So Leila, again, it's very rare for a, for a freshman to be the MVP of that tournament. For her to do that, and she was also, was it second-team All-American or first-team All-American? Do you even know? She was first-team All-American, so that's Leila Scott. I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and have Yar come on up here real quick. Yar Maniel, this is a young lady, and this is the great thing about Johnson County Community College and our athletic programs, and our women's basketball program in particular. Yar comes out of high school, and would you say, would it be accurate to say nobody really recruited you? Correct. Okay. Two years later, she's got two years of education done and done a very good job. Played, went 68 and 2 in two years. Played in two national championship games, won a national title, is on the all-tournament team, and is a Division I signee. She's going to be playing at Delaware State next year on a Ford Scholarship. We have, literally, I have a book full of stories like that, that our school has been able to help get kids from, from point A to point B and help them on their journey. And I'm so proud of Yar, because when she, because you just started playing like your freshman year. So she's about five, she's not like most kids that have been playing for 15 years. She just started playing basketball about five, six years ago. And so she was a little bit raw, needed some development, and got a ton better here the last couple of years, and has turned into a Division One player out of Johnson County with really good grades, too. And so just so proud of Yar, and she put us on her back a little bit down the stretch in that game, too, and made some big shots and some big plays, and made your free throws. She's always done that. Give Yar one more big hand there. And then the final young lady I'd like to bring up here is Amaya Stacker. Stack is a young lady, again, I'm going to say like NAIA schools, maybe. So she had some schools, nothing wrong with those schools, but it was kind of lower-level schools that were recruiting her, and she comes in here, and man, there was a lot of work to be done, wasn't there? You would agree with that, right? And the work that this kid put in to get where she's at now, she's turned into an absolute force for us as a sophomore. You know, really just dominant. I'm going to say probably led the country in points per minute, rebounds per minute, makes the all-tournament team. Went, went, and I wouldn't say you dominated that 6'4" kid from Pima, but she outplayed the 6'4" kid at Pima that was a first-team All-American, and was just, just absolutely impressive. And again, back to just opportunity and what our school and what our athletic department and what our program does for people. This is a young lady that's coming in with very little opportunities, comes here two years later. She's signing with Southeast Missouri State with Seaman, with Division One school. I think these guys are just a great example, I think, of what we call the process and just following the daily work that has to be done to get from, from point A to point B, to where we start to where we want to finish. And they are a great example of just showing up every day and following our process and following our plan. So just very proud of those guys. I brought my assistant coach. You guys might remember her from last year.
Yeah.
She got a coaching award last year. Katie played for me. Katie won a national championship playing for us in 2015, and then went on and played at Colorado State. And I like to always brag that she was the national assistant coach of the year last year. So another one I'm incredibly proud of, come from Baldwin, tiny little Baldwin, Kansas, and comes in here and ends up going to play Division II basketball. So very proud of all these guys, and we really appreciate you guys, your recognition. Hopefully, hopefully, we're back here at this time next year, because it means we did it again. Thank you, thank you very much. I forgot to show you guys this.
But before we take pictures, I also would like to just mention that Coach Ben Conrad also won the Lorraine M. Ramsey Coach of the Tournament Award.
Do we want to open it for questions for anybody from the board? Sure. All right, anybody from the board have questions for our fantastic women's basketball team? Trustee Ratan.
Congratulations, Coach and young women. Could you tell me what your majors are?
Mine's business.
Thank you very much.
Any other trustees? Questions coming?
Coach Conrad, I just want to say, your enthusiasm is dynamite. And ladies, you are so lucky to have such an awesome coach that can bring you up to where you're at right now.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Anybody else? I just wanted to comment that as each of you were being talked about, I noticed that you got real bashful, and you put your heads down, and you averted your eyes. Soak up all of that, be proud of where you are, how hard you have worked, what you have accomplished, both in your academics as well as your own personal life, because I myself am not a sporty person, but I am learning through my own children just how much sports really refines you and disciplines you, and that goes for the rest of your life. So be proud of what you've done, be proud of who you are. Thank you so much for representing us on a national stage. It speaks volumes to who we are as a college when you guys go out there and make us look so awesome. So thank you so much. And Coach, thanks for believing that everybody has the potential to go even higher than they come in and to do things that maybe they didn't even think they could do when they came here. Appreciate that.
Awesome. Okay, pictures.
Okay, let's do the pictures. So we will start with Lisa. Should we do that? Kind of in the order? All right. So I was thinking, you want to do the board and the candidates in front? How does that sound, Liz? Does that sound good?
No, no.
Liz is in charge. Okay, Susan, does that, you, Susan, you direct us. You're the best at the best optics.
Trustees, Dr. Corb, if you could come in the middle.
Perfect. Okay, sounds good.
The perks of being in charge.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're so good at that.
It's the hardest part.
All right. Perfect, this looks wonderful, everybody. All right, here we go. Good smiles, Lisa, let me see that medal, yes. Let me see that smile. Perfect. All right, we're so proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing us here this close. This is amazing. I'm so proud of you tonight. Amazing.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not going to come up front.
Greg may be the only one. Yes.
Susan, are we all in if we do this, or are we too spread out?
I see everybody, and this is good. Lee, over a little to the left so I can see you, and then Greg to your left by Judy so I can see you. Great. Here we go, friends. Looking good. Great smiles, I love it. And one go-caps for me.
Go-caps!
All right, congrats.
Thank you.
Hey, Laura.
Yeah, so much.
Okay, with that, we're going to go to the next fun and exciting thing, which is our budget workshop. Isn't every trustee excited? Ah! And with that, I am going to turn it over to Megan Casey, the interim vice president and CFO, to walk us through this year's budget. Welcome.
Good evening. Again, Megan Casey, interim vice president, chief financial officer. And for the next hour, we will go over the budget workshop book. We'll talk about the proposed budget for FY '26, go over next steps, and feel free to answer any questions or ask me any questions as we go along.
I don't know if we're in Mercury retrograde, but I feel like this is one of those times. Be Mercury retrograde, it just feels like everything's kind of, you know? We're just-
I'm clunky today.
We're just doing what we need to do. We're making our best way for it. We are, we are. Anybody got a stand-up routine they want to practice? A little song, a little ditty? A lot of little side things that for some reason are just happening. Got you squared away, Megan?
Yes. So hopefully all trustees have a copy of the booklet that was prepared for you. For members of our audience and our community members, this information can also be found on our webpage by searching "budget" in the search box or "JCC annual budget", and the first search result will bring up our financial report section, which houses our audited financial statements, the budget workshop book, and our final budget for the last five years. Before we start, I'd like to thank the financial services team for their help in preparing this information for you all today, and special thanks to Chandra Russell, our budget director, Debbie Storman, our budget analyst, for creating this book for you, and all their work in monitoring our performance all year long. And then many thanks to the 125 budget administrators across campus for their role in budget preparation each year. Okay, so the first page we will review in the budget workshop booklet is our mission, vision, and values. Our goal is to prepare a budget that responsibly manages resources to allow us to continue to meet this mission and achieve our strategic goals. On our next page, page four, these are the preliminary guidelines that the board approved in December. Three items that I will highlight on this page. We recommended an increase in credit hour enrollment of 4% above what we budgeted for FY '25. We also recommended that tuition rates remain the same as they are in the current fiscal year, so no tuition increase. And then we also included a 4.5% across-the-board salary increase pursuant to the master agreement. Since these preliminary guidelines were established in December, we received updated information from the county related to assessed valuation, and we received updated information from the state member who has to state funding. So on bullet two, we originally estimated a 5% increase for assessed valuation, and it is actually 6% is what we're recommending. And so in a few minutes, we will talk more about this mill levy rate reduction, but we are recommending a mill levy rate reduction of a quarter mill, so from 8.1 mils to 7.8. And then for state aid, we are anticipating an increase in funding based on what we received in this current fiscal year. Page eight and nine houses our budget calendar. So page nine is where we are currently, today, the budget workshop. At the end of this month, we will bring forth a recommendation to the management and finance committee to adopt our fiscal year '26 budget, and then the board will vote to approve that budget at the May 8th board meeting. And then in the October, September timeframe, we will hold the revenue-neutral rate hearing, and then we will adopt our legal budget. And so just a reminder, the management of budget becomes our working budget as of July 1st, allows us to continue business, pay our employees and vendors, and continue on with the mission. Any questions before I move on?
Any question, trustee Ratan?
I did notice a date change of our trustee regular board meeting is going to be on May 8th, and that it looks like our committee won't be on the first Wednesday, but it'll be on the last Wednesday of this month.
Yes, ma'am.
Just to make sure that we all see that as trustees. There are some date changes at the end of April and May.
That was approved last April.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure everyone saw that and had it on their calendar. Including myself.
Well, now we will go over revenues. So our revenues for FY '26, property taxes continues to be the majority of our property revenues, or revenue, excuse me, at 66%, followed by tuition fees at 15, state aid at 14%, and other income at 5. And investment income is included in that other income category. So total revenue of $198 million, getting pretty close to $200 million. Here's a history of our actual revenue from fiscal year '17 through fiscal year '25, and then a budget-to-budget comparison of fiscal year '25 to '26. So steady increase in property tax revenue, steady distribution of tuition and fee and state aid. So one thing to note, and that we'll talk on this slide, right, is our property tax revenue is impacted by both the mill levy rate that you all decide to set, and then, of course, assessed valuation. So since fiscal year '14, our mill levy rate has been, has decreased by 18%, but assessed valuation has continued to increase. So it has increased by 8% in just the three, past three years.
Can you tell we're all in deep analysis right now?
Our next page, page 15, is historical mill levy analysis, and we always pull this average residential value from the county's reevaluation report and use that as a comparison to see the taxes that JCC would anticipate receiving based on that average residential value. So for 2024, our final mill levy rate was 8.124 mils. And so on an average residential value of $458,000, the taxes JCC could expect to receive would be $428. So another thing to know, in comparison, or JCC's mill levy rate in comparison to the total, we remain consistent at 7, 8% to 7% of the total mill levy rate. And on page 16, presenting similar information but showing estimated taxes based on assessed value of a home. So for 2025, assuming the mill levy rate is 7.861, the taxes that we would expect to see levy would be $440 based on that assessed value, or appraised value of $487,000.
So $12 increase on average. Am I reading that correctly? Page 15, which was the historical, so last year on average was $428 per household to support JCC as the local taxpayers' contribution, and this year, we would, even with the decrease, taxpayers would pay $440, which is an increase of $12 to the household. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, please proceed.
This chart represents our historical revenues received across all funds, so the general fund, capital outlay, and the special assessment fund. Fiscal year '24 was the last year for that special assessment fund, which is why you don't see it on FY '25 and '26. And moving on to credit hour enrollment, so we budgeted an increase of 4% above what we budgeted in FY '25. So we are showing actual credit hour enrollment up through fiscal year '24, and then we present the budget numbers for '25, because we are budget, we are budgeting based on budget, so budget-to-budget each year. So we're still in FY '25, so we will likely come in higher than that number that you're seeing, but for budgeted purposes, budgeted, budgeting, excuse me, purposes, we are looking at that budgeted number. So while it's not listed here, just for reference, for FY '25, we budgeted a 2% increase above the FY '24 budget.
You, so I'm unclear what the minus is. Does that mean, I guess we went, yeah, okay, sorry, I'm now reading it out loud while talking to you. So we decreased in credit hour enrollment from '24 to '25? Is that correct?
So '24 is the actual credit hours, the '25 number that- The '25 number that's listed there is the budget number.
Okay.
And so we will have final numbers later, right, once FY '25 is complete.
So what's the negative 3.2? That's what we're anticipating?
That's the difference between 2024 actual and 2025 budget.
Credit hours.
Correct.
Right?
Credit hours, yeah.
This is credit hours. Okay. Any other questions from the Board? No? All right.
And then that bottom chart is just representing the five-year change in enrollment and comparing JCC to other institutions in the metro area and then also to public two-years across the United States. So while we have experienced slightly more of a loss than public two-years across the United States, we've experienced less of a loss than our counterparts across the metro.
Why, sorry.
2018. Yes, Trustee Cross.
Why is it so much greater in Missouri? You know?
I don't know. To that.
Somebody spreading disinformation about how terrible college is in Missouri.
Yeah, I mean, I can speculate.
Trying to bring some love in.
Not the community college professionals.
And then on page 19, it displays the distribution of credit hours and tuition and fee revenue by residency. So Johnson County continues to be the majority of our credit hours and tuition and fee revenue. I will highlight the metro rate at 9% in the credit hour section. So we've seen steady growth there since we instituted that in fiscal year '17. So from 6, 7, 8 and now 9%.
Okay, Trustee Mitchell?
Quick question. What's the difference between out-of-state and out-of-state metro zip?
So the metro rate is for certain zip codes in the Kansas City, Missouri area and then out-of-state would be anyone that is out.
Okay, gotcha. That makes sense.
And do our international students fall in this? In one of these, are they the out-of-state?
They would be in the out-of-state rate.
Okay. Any other questions?
So immigrants pay more?
Oh, yes, they do. Trustee Cross? All right.
The next few pages show our historical tuition and fee revenue or rates, excuse me, by residency. And then our required student fees per credit hour remain at 16 per credit hour and we have not increased those fees since 2014.
What do those fees go for?
$7 goes towards the student activity fee. Five is for debt, three for parking and roads and then a dollar for sustainability efforts.
We haven't raised them since, what did you say, 2014?
2014.
Thank you.
Our course fee schedule also remains the same since fiscal year '25 budget discussion. So no changes there, but presented for your information. That's on page 25. And then this next page shows a comparison of our tuition and fee costs per credit hour based on full-time enrollment of 30 credit hours in comparison to a few institutions in the metro area.
Any questions about that? All right, well, keep on, keeping on.
Pages 27 through 29 show tuition and fee rates for the Kansas Community Colleges based on residency. And then on page 30, just a graphical representation of where we fall among the other 18 community colleges. And so we are third at 101 per credit hour for in-district.
Butler's just doing it so they can be number one. Going on down there, Butler.
They figured out our game. So they figured out our game.
That's right. They sure did.
So on page 31, this compares average published in-district tuition by state. So Kansas is eight from the bottom, eight from the bottom there. So based on '24, '25 and assuming a 30-hour full-time enrollment, 3,689 average price translates to $123 per credit hour for in-district compared to our 101 currently.
I'd like to have these pages. Now, we just went over page 26 and on, sent on to our K-Board partners. A nice flashy package with big arrows pointing to certain things to just highlight.
I think that's why they won us.
What was that, Trustee Cross?
I said, I think that might be why they won us. They went in on that Vermont money.
Yeah, that's right. All right, any other, any questions from the Board? Okay. Keep going. Thank you, Megan. Keep us going.
Yep, and then this final page is showing a comparison of state funding from fiscal year '24 to '25. And we will talk more about fiscal year '26 anticipated state aid in a few minutes here. All right, we'll move on to expenses here on page 36. So total expenses budgeted of $202 million. Salaries and benefits make up 75% combined of our expenses or expected expenses for FY '26, operating at 21% and then capital and debt service at 2% each. And then page 37 shows our actual expenses, similar to actual revenue that we reviewed a few pages ago. So for fiscal year '17 to FY '25 actual and then budget-to-budget comparison for FY '25 and '26. So salaries and benefits rate have increased over time due to increased benefit costs and then also raises. The operating section, year over year, I should say, the annual compound growth between FY '17 and FY '24 is between 2.5% to 3%. So still slow, slow increases overall in that category.
I think there's something to be said to our community that when we say we try to keep our costs low, we really mean it. That if you were to look at this for any major business in the metro, I don't think they could say that they've been able to keep their operating costs to 2% and 3% over, what are we at? Six-year, nine-year term, is that right? Am I doing the math right? Three and six, nine years. That we've been able to keep the operating costs within the 20% margin speaks highly about the people on this campus who take their budgeting very seriously and ensure that we're not out there buying, you know, things that students don't need and that aren't beneficial to making this college what it is. So leave that comment there. Any comments or questions from anyone else?
So I won't go over other pages in the book in detail, but I will point out that the remaining pages present budget based on, divided by fund and organizational code or department, if you are interested in looking in that. And then it also shows an updated projection model based on this information for FY '26, which includes projected reserves over the next five years and then our capital expenditures. So again, this information can be found on our website by searching Budget.
I feel the need to carry the burden from Trustee Musel, who used to always say he didn't know of any other place that publicized all the details of all the various budgets with as much transparency as we do. And over time, I've come to appreciate his comment about that because it is true. You can find out just about any department on campus and a lot of the budgeting that goes on and what we spend our money on. So those pages are important, especially for our community as we are out in the community explaining what the tax dollars go for. All right, Megan, keep us going.
I did have an overall question.
Yep.
It's okay. Thank you for all of these details. I know our budget figures into like our S and P rating or our bond rating. Are we still pretty solid and is it like an A+?
Yeah, so we have a AAA bond rating with standard and force. And then our Moody's rating is AA1.
Anybody else? All right.
So moving on to talk about our projected or proposed budget for FY '26. So recapping the information shared on the assessed valuation update. So in March, we received updated valuation information from the county. So taxable appraised value was actually up 7.2%. But for budgeting purposes, we consider the change in assessed value. Then we reduce for pending exemptions, appeals. And then based on a historical percentage, excuse me, we recommend an amount. And so we recommended budgeting a 6% increase in assessed valuation. So if the mill levy were to remain flat, that 6% increase in assessed valuation would generate $7 million incremental revenue above what we budgeted in FY '25. So most of the growth from, the appraisal growth came from reappraisals as opposed to new construction. And that continues to be the trend. And some general mill levy factors here. Half a mil translates to $8.4 million and one mil is 16, almost 17 million dollars. So the impact of a change in assessed valuation of 1% translates to $1.1 million for us.
Questions? Vince? Are you out there?
I'm assuming that you're getting to the part, maybe I missed it. And so how much incremental will we get with our reduction?
Yes, that's my next slide.
You're getting there.
Yep. So what we have presented here is a comparison to our adopted budget for FY '25 and that was based on 8.1 mils and a 7% assessed valuation increase. This preliminary budget category corresponds to what we presented in December with those preliminary budget guidelines. And then we have three proposals here or three scenarios, if you will, of a mill levy reduction. A 10th of a mil reduction based on, well, in consideration of 6% assessed valuation increase. The incremental revenue increase or total revenue, so general fund and capital outlay, would be $5.7 million. If we did a quarter mil reduction, it would be $3.2 million and so it would be saving taxpayers around $4 million. And then if we did a half a mil reduction, we would have slightly less revenue than FY '25 and it would save taxpayers $8.3 million. And so the mill levy reduction is to, or the purpose rationale behind that is to, you know, choose between Johnson County, not taking all of the revenue that we could, we could receive, right, based on assessed valuation and then saving money for Johnson County taxpayers.
Thoughts, questions, comments? Yeah, Trustee Hamel.
If I may, this is, I really appreciate this, spreading it out here, giving the different options to get a better view of what we're looking at and how it would affect the revenue. And then obviously go all the way to the point where we're even going past revenue neutral in this one, just to kind of give us some ideas. So I appreciate that.
Yes, yep. And one thing to note too is that quarter mil reduction, we are slightly over revenue neutral rate too. So that is a nice in-between, if you will.
What would be the neutral, yeah, where is that?
So revenue neutral rate is at the very bottom at 7. And it's estimated, we will get the final revenue neutral rate in June from the county.
Yeah, okay. Other questions or comments? I think, I agree with you, Trustee Hamel. I appreciate having several options so we can see. I'm always in favor. I think since I've been on this board, we've been able to lower it. I think every year since I've been here, six years now, which it's really important that we clarify with taxpayers that the appraised value gives us how much we can capture and tax on, but the, what we do is the mil sets how much of that we have to take. And we are ensuring that the taxpayers aren't taxed on the entire piece of that, of course. And I appreciate lowering it by a quarter. Seems like a happy medium to me and I appreciate having different options to look at it too. But that's just my two cents on it. Anybody else? Thoughts, comments, questions?
Thank you for the clarity.
So this is just another representation of what was in the Budget Workshop booklet, rather, and just showing from FY '14 that we've reduced it by 18% and it does include the 7.861 recommendation for FY '26.
In fact, they were in the mil from, what was the last time it was in the sevens? Was it 2001? Is that right? 2002?
Mm-hmm, 2002.
Twenty years. Okay, thank you.
So the rationale behind this proposal, looking at our CFI ratio, looking at our reserve levels, is really what drove us to bring this recommendation to you all. Our CFI ratio has consistently been in the ideal range, which is greater than 3, which means that we are responsible, sustainable in our operations. We can pay our debt and we're able to withstand changing economic conditions in the short term. So we've estimated '25 and '26. We calculate this number after we have received our external audit each year, so after June 30. So we just have estimates here. But both of these estimates do consider the mill levy reduction and do consider planned investments in the facilities master plan. So then our projected reserves based on this proposed budget. So the gray bar here is the Board policy minimum of 25% of our budgeted expenses. So even with the mill levy reduction, we would still be, are projected to be at 35%. Reserve level's at 35%. The steady decrease here is because of intentional spend in support for the facilities master plan. So even though we have 24% here in fiscal year '30, we redo this every year as we update our projections and at no point in time will we be below the Board policy 25%. Okay, our general fund revenue, just to recap. So we're recommending a reduction of the mill levy of a quarter mil, which will generate incremental tax revenue, general fund revenue of $2.8 million. The mill levy rate will slightly exceed revenue neutral rate, which will require notice to Johnson County taxpayers. For tuition and fees, again, we projected a 4% increase in credit hour enrollment with no increase to tuition and fee rates. So the incremental revenue in that quarter category would be $1.1 million. And then for state aid, for general fund revenue, we are anticipating an increase of $719,000. And then on our investment income, we are anticipating increased interest earned of $3.5 million on permitted investments.
Trustee Ratan?
I wrote down 3.2 instead of 2.8.
So 2.8 is just the general fund impact of that number. 3.2 would be the overall.
Okay.
Who else?
The $719,000 from the state still kept the general percentage from the state about the same.
And that is our next slide here too, showing the general fund impact in comparison to FY '25. And the bulk of the reduction here in that total is due to 101. And the bulk of the reduction here in that total is due to one-time funding that we're not expecting to receive in fiscal year 26. So the cybersecurity, business and industry, and student success initiative funds.
Did we know that that wasn't going to be replenished? Or is that a new change?
So we initially expected that it would be one-time. Initially, we thought that we would be receiving that in this year. And so recent developments, yes. It's confirmed that we would not be receiving that in fiscal year 26.
Hello, Trustee Ratan. Welcome.
You know, this is what happens when you're a governor and you have too many balls juggling. So I apologize if I'm interrupting your explanation.
What did I say?
Trustee Ratan.
Oh, yeah, thanks. It's just, we're all discombobulated. We are on page 10 of the state funding now.
All right.
And we have been led very eloquently and efficiently by Megan up here, who's our interim CFO, then something else.
Vice President.
Vice President, I'm sorry. See, I told you, there's something in the air tonight. We're just all discombobulated. So please proceed.
So our general fund expenses for FY26. Our operating expenses increased by 2.8 million. And this is largely due to inflationary increases, increased cost of goods and services. But also included in that operating total is a planned one-time investment in an access control replacement system. And the expected cost of that is 1.5 million. We have a placeholder for the bridge strategic plan that covers 2025 to 2027, when that's finalized, totaling 140,000. And then we have a placeholder for professional services to support the facilities master plan for 2 million. Capital expenses, regular high priority remodel requests that we see every year for 635,000. And then continued investment in active learning classrooms for 1 million. So salaries and benefits, again, across the board salary increase of 4.5% is included in this budget, which will cost 4.9 million. And then we are expecting increased benefit costs of 3.5 million. So budgeted positions, we expect that to remain flat. We've provided the comparison here for the last five years. But we do know that positions may be reallocated between categories. And then here is the proposed budget for FY26. So 198 million in revenue, 202 million in expenses. So this would show use of reserves of 4.4 million. But I have noted on the prior screen that we have several one-time strategic initiatives. So the access control system, the facilities master plan, active learning classrooms, and the strategic plan placeholder. And those total 4.6 million. And so we will be using reserves to fund those strategic initiatives. And so considering that, we would end up with a slight contribution to reserves of just under 200,000.
But we are spending from reserves, but yet making a net contribution to reserves.
Well, showing it here that we're using reserves to make up that difference. So yes, I mean.
It's budgeted, I guess, is.
Right.
We don't know exactly. I'm not trying to catch anybody. I'm just saying, like, with Dr. Bound, when I was chair, I didn't fully grasp that just because we budgeted doesn't mean exactly that's how we spend it. Because there are changes in the fluid nature of the year.
Yes. But for these strategic initiatives and purchases, they are included in this budget number. And we are saying that will be the use of our reserves for that.
So then where would our reserves be after this?
That's what I want to know, too.
Amazingly loud.
I know.
So I don't have the dollar figure on here, but this first column here, 25, 26, even considering the budget that we've proposed here, we would still be at 30, our reserve level, excuse me, would still be at 35%. And I can get you.
Why is it so high?
We have contributed consistently, I think FY25, we contributed a lot more to reserves than we planned. Sometimes it could be that we.
It's my fault, it's our fault, I'm just saying. We contributed it to that point, right?
Yes. Sometimes it is that we didn't spend, right, what we budgeted. Other times, like with investment income, we were a little conservative in what we estimated and received more. But that is why it's high. And we acknowledge that, and that's why we are choosing to use our reserves to fund the facilities master plan or support part of it.
We've had major events go on here in the past five years.
Yes.
Global pandemics, major acquisitions, finance, what was it we did, oh, CDL. There's accusations that we just squirrel away money and sit on it here. And perhaps that's true. I just feel compelled to speak out against it. I'm sorry to grandstand, I don't mean to. I'm just saying, we're actively doing things and working to educate a labor force and a workforce here. Sorry to catch you on the spot, but I just think that we're not playing around, like we're actively doing things. Thank you, sorry to.
No, that's okay, Trustee Cross. And I'm going to follow up on that a little bit, because I always, at this point in the budget workshop, like to talk a little bit about the importance of reserves. And I think, I think we all intuitively can sense the importance of having a savings account, right? Because you never know what's going to happen.
Right.
You know, today's economy is a little bit volatile, for example, and we don't really know where we're going to be by the end of the year. But there are other benefits to having adequate reserves as well, bond rating and things like that. Can you speak to that a little bit? The benefit we get from having sufficient reserves to instill confidence in our lenders and things of that nature?
Yes, certainly. So the reason for reserves is to support one-time investments, but also to help us withstand changing economic conditions and unexpected things that come up throughout the year. So our reserve level impacts our CFI ratio. It impacts the cost of debt. And to your point, it impacts our bond rating.
Yeah, and I'll get right to you, Trustee Cross. But, and I always like to emphasize that, because to Trustee Cross's point, this is not just us squirreling away money so that we, there are definitive benefits we gain from having that money sitting there. So, Trustee Cross, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate your input. I guess what I'm asking is, and I maybe should know after 12 years, but I don't. When we have payroll or we're waiting on payments from the county or the state, and they usually always come through, but there are moments where we have pauses and we dip into the reserves to pay what we're short. I mean, how big is that gap ever? I'm not even sure it happens, but it's my understanding that we're planning and preparing for that, all of which sets us up to put us in a financially healthy position. But how much are we ever short? And we need to dip into our reserves at that point. Is it 10 million? Is it 5 million?
I will say that we do not typically use reserves to fund ongoing activities. And that is part of why we are able to invest and use those funds to kind of get us through if we're waiting on funds from the state so that we can meet payroll or continue to pay. But one other consideration for reserves, right, is managing that allows us to not increase unfairly increased tuition and fees, you know, for students, or to significantly increase the tax burden for our taxpayers if we have come upon some expected expenses or if we were to go into a recession or some other economic factor.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, yes.
Trustee Smith-Everett.
Thanks. If I can just add a comment to that. I think earlier this evening, when we had the basketball team talking about players carrying the team on their back, I often think during our budget cycle about how much we here, this institution, carries a county on our back in many ways. We do a lot to keep this county and the workforce going, our Small Business Development Center, our CDL, our technical trades, our lower tuition than anyone else in the region for people to be able to transform their lives. And if we were to be in a volatile situation with the economy suddenly, and we would need to make it, plus also be able to do the things that we have projected in our special projects and our strategic plan, we have to be able to weather that. And, you know, we have some legislators who seem like they are, they've got their eye on our reserves, and there are things that we're doing that are for ill-intent. And I would just say, speaking for myself alone on this board, the only intent we have at this college is taking care of our community, because that is the part of the college that makes us unique. We are a community college, which means we are tuned in to what our community needs. And if we encounter an economy that we need to weather things, we've got to have the funds to do it. And it is our prerogative to take care of this institution, not anywhere else in Kansas, no other institution, but this institution. And the seven-member board has to weigh all of those things every year. So I will leave it at that.
Thank you for that. You know, I think it's also, so you make a good point. If we go back 15 years in the college's history to the last significant recession, at no time were we more important to our community as people came to retool and reskill themselves. Our enrollment reached all-time highs during that period of time. And at the same time, we were working diligently to keep our workforce employed and to make sure not only that our students were taken care of, but that our employees were taken care of as well. And that's the importance of having something to back you up. And, you know, I don't, I'm not going to be a doomsayer, but we're all reading the news, and we're reading predictions that we may, may be headed for a recession. We don't know what will happen to property valuations if that occur. They're already starting to decline. And so we need to be prepared for that. And so I echo what Trustee Smith-Everett said about the importance of having those there.
Not to be labor this, Madam Chair, if I may, but I'm in position to look.
We are belaboring it, though, aren't we?
We are.
My new office and considered purchasing commercial real estate and then rethought it, mostly because I don't want to manage real estate. But also because there's a lot of inventory. There's a lot of commercial inventory, and there's even a shocking amount more available for sale. And then even more if you call up somebody and ask. Say, I'm at CAF. I did it. But there are projections other than mine that regional banks are scared because of their exposure in the commercial market. And if the commercial market goes, we don't know. I don't know, and I'm not an economist, what that'll do for the residential market. So I think for the people who are in a hurry to collect municipal entities because of their taxing potential, because they don't have the courage to apply a proper income tax or do whatever they need to do at the state level, I mean, it's just a matter of budgeting what needs to be done. And speaking for myself, I mean, just having the courage that needs to happen to properly finance an organization. And in this uncertain time, we don't know what's going to happen. The Wall Street Journal had a story two years ago about a piece of property in downtown St. Louis, which could be anecdotal, but it had gone for 204 million, Google it, in 2006, and went for 4 million three years ago. So there are real anecdotes around the country, particularly in the urban core, but, you know, we live next to the city, so, thank you, I'll shut up.
Don't you love being at the podium while we just wax philosoph?
I'm saying, good job. I appreciate you and everything that's presented.
Yeah, you're doing a terrific job. And with that, you may proceed, please.
All right. Well, our last slide is just next step. So April 30th is when we will bring the recommendation to adopt the FY26 budget to the Management and Finance Committee. May 8th will be the Board of Trustees meeting where we all will adopt the budget. And then August and September timeframe, again, we will hold the revenue neutral rate hearing and then the adoption of the legal budget for FY26. Any other questions I can answer?
So I don't know what questions were asked before I managed to arrive, so I'll just open it up in general. Anybody have any questions? Trustee Cross, I see something on the tip of your tongue.
No, I, I guess what I, I want to say is, if I may, Trustee Hamel called me before the meeting here and had expressed to me, you know, his desire on the mill. I'm not an idiot. Like, I'm aware of the current political environment, both at the federal and state level. So I'm just saying, what if we did go revenue neutral and ate into the reserves? You know, I'm hesitant to placate or pacify anybody in any kind of Munich, you know, in the 1930s, but what if we did that? I don't want to walk away from this thing if somebody accused me of not having grilled you, and I'd rather grill you than somebody else. So what if we did cut into the reserves?
That would just be our decision. That is what that, you know, that 0.5 mill reduction, that is just, gets us closer to that. And that would just be, it would just be more out of reserves. And that's, that's why that's there, so that you can kind of see what the comparison would be if we were to do something different than the 0.25.
And if I may, Madam Chair, just to continue, and Madam President, look, I trust you implicitly in your staff and administration, so I just want the world to know that I also do grill you. I'm critical of you. And so I trust your recommendation. I'm just saying and exploring the possibility of, I don't think we've ever kept the rate at a revenue neutral rate. It'd be interesting to do it one time, just so we could say we did it. And when possible, we do it. I don't know that that's the smartest decision based upon everything I just said. But I'm also, too, just trying to brainstorm and say, we could do that, but would that be smart?
If I may add a little bit to it.
Trustee Hamel, go right ahead.
Thank you. So it looks like, from my figures, and Megan helped me if I got it right or wrong, it looks like the neutral rate would be 0.419?
I had it at 0.37, sorry.
Okay. And so maybe around 0.4 is where we, where revenue neutral is. And then you guys probably heard me talk about this. I'm not a big fan of how they, they went about setting up the revenue neutral rate. I don't think it quite captures the intent, in my personal opinion, I'm guessing what they were going for. And the idea of it being revenue neutral per person, not revenue neutral per county, because obviously our population has grown as far as our county's going, not every county is, but ours is seeing population growth, and we're seeing construction being built as well. And so, you know, going revenue neutral actually would make it, every taxpayer would get a tax cut, not an even tax, you know, staying the same, but actually go down for everybody if we go revenue neutral. And so I would, and I know this would be almost impossible to figure. I tried to figure it myself and tried to get some numbers from the county a while back, and I've given up trying to get the numbers I want, to figure out where that would be approximately, guesstimate where would actually be revenue neutral per individual. And that would be kind of, I would like to. So one of the things that I was discussing with Lee was obviously the Blue Ribbon Committee. And they're looking at colleges across the state and looking to make sure we're being as efficient as we possibly can with taxpayer funding. And I will say in general, and I've said this, you know, multiple times over, I think we're one of the more responsible ones out there. Even outside of colleges in general, you look at our, you look at your tax bill, you'll see most, most of the other taxing entities will increase your taxes much more than we do. We do a really good job of really cutting quite a bit and much more efficient than many of the other institutions that tax us. At the same time, I want to make sure we do everything we possibly can for everybody. And most of these years, as Laura pointed out, we do a good job of decreasing, especially in the last seven years. I saw six of the last seven years we've decreased the mill. And, you know, many years, we do a great job. I mean, some years, I don't think we do as well as we could have. But again, there's always our circumstances where we don't know. We were in the negotiations last year, figured out how to pay for, pay for the raises. And so we didn't really do much of a cut at all last year, and I think we ended up around like 7.6 or something percent. Is that right? Do you know? Increase for the average taxpayer, or maybe not for the average taxpayer, yeah. You know, I just want to make sure we take any scrutiny we possibly can off the college while we're, especially if we're going to be audited and looked at, scrutinize as much as we possibly can. So again, I'm not completely disappointed in where we're sitting right now. Was it 2.9, 2.9% increase approximately per, on the average taxpayer? And in general, that's great. But if you do go back further, there's been years that were definitely tougher for us. And so we have like a 70% increase, where is it at? We're definitely going past inflation over the last nine years on this chart that we're looking at. So if I'm looking at from where we were on the average taxpayer is 285. If you go with what. If you go with what-
Page two.
Page 16. And you're looking at your estimated taxes of 285 on the average house, and now we're at 440. So you're looking at a 54% increase over that time period, where inflation, depending on different calculators I looked at, have between 31% and 34% is what it should be. So again, this is a great year, and this is what we're looking at, is a great plan, but we have years where we definitely haven't stayed in that same thing. So depending on what, and again, you can look at different years and get different numbers, and that's just what we're going back for on this chart, is why I chose it. But anything we can possibly do to go as low as we possibly can, especially when we're being scrutinized. And the reason why we're being scrutinized is because there are people that are complaining about our property taxes. And again, I don't believe we're the biggest offender. I think we're one of the most helpful and beneficial and, so one of the most responsible in the county. But how low can we go and still, and not have any problems? So one of the things that I point out every year, and this is not to knock on, you know, our smart classrooms, I really do like them. But again, wait a year, wait one year, save a million dollars, and it's an easy cut and just keep it, go back to it next year, or whenever we feel like it's a good time to do it. I know we're actually, this is the last year of it as well, so maybe it's harder to do it on your last year of the plan. Maybe we don't put it back in the next one, but either way, whatever we can do the lowest we can is what I think we should go with.
Any questions or comments?
I just always like to break down the amount, I like how you break down into the average residential value. I remember when I was elected, it was approximately a dollar per day for the average home price. Now that average per day is $1.20. For our 8.1, for our proposed 7.8, average is $1.20 per day. And again, compared to the school districts and the counties, I do think that we pay significantly less to support such a large institution.
Trustee Smith-Everson.
I think it's also really important that we look forward. The state has just put in a very significant change in the tax policy in the state of Kansas, which in some, the opinion of some members of this board, looks a lot like brownback 10 years ago, which could have some real big effects on the funding that we get moving forward. We also have a brand-new president coming in that we are going to be directing to build us a new strategic plan and work towards some lofty goals. And so we want to ensure that this president doesn't have to come in. Joe Sapcheck, I believe, had to come in and was in the opposite boat where he had to start making cuts immediately.
First vote was a mill.
His first, yeah.
We had to raise them.
So we need to ensure, again, we, it's about this institution first and the taxpayers second. And the reason I say that is because the taxpayers voted for us to be here, to make these decisions for this institution. And our community counts on us to be really judicious, you know, with those decisions. I would argue a little bit, Trustee Hamill, with your math, I understand what you're saying about the 285 tax levies to 440, but I also could turn my house right now and make a huge profit because that's the benefit I get for real estate, which is different than just the inflationary costs I incur at Walmart, Target, grocery stores, whatever. So the, while, yes, it has been higher than inflation, that's because we have a really hot real estate market and it's a desirable county to live in. And our community expects us to have desirable facilities. For example, one of the first votes I made was for our new science labs because the science labs here were 20 years outdated from the ones my daughter is using in a high school down the road. And, you know, I under, you've aired that concern about the classrooms, smart, what are they called?
Active learning.
Active learning classrooms, one day I'll get it, all of the things, but I think if it were up to you, you would probably push them off every year, so I don't think we'd ever get to them. And I would argue, students come to us expecting college to be their next level of progress and success so that they're ready for the workforce. You go to some of these businesses out there doing cutting-edge stuff. My husband runs a lab and expects his students to have that, his new hires to have that hands-on experience. And if they don't, they're passed over for students, graduates that have. So I just want to say, for my part, I'm really looking forward. There is a lot of unknown out there, and we have a new president coming on board that I want to set up for success. And we have got to ensure that this institution is in a good enough place that we don't burden a new president with having to work out, work through a crisis. And that would be my concern with cutting it much more than it is right now. So that concludes-
Trustee Rea.
-my comments.
Yes, go right ahead.
So I just want to say that all of the things that you point out are very valid. I think that one of the things that we think about when we look at preparing the budget and making a recommendation is, this is one of our, and obviously the main source of our revenue, right? So it is one piece of it. But there has been a lot of conversation about changes that could be made to our ability to control some of the, you know, the amount of assessed valuation or the mill levy cap or things like that that there has been conversation about. We are looking at the big picture when we look at all of these things, knowing that if something happens with this revenue source, that is going to impact tuition potentially. If something happens with our state revenue source, then that's going to impact what we need to do with our mill levy and assessed valuation. So one of the reasons why we did talk, when we talked about this at different levels of it, but then we landed kind of here in the middle and said, there's just a lot of uncertainty out there. So.
Want to know that's- Thank you for that.
Yes.
Trustee Hamill, go right ahead.
So one of the things that I want to make sure that I'm, one of my biggest concerns is local control, and I want to make sure it stays in local control. And while that's, it's one of the things that's being looked at, and one of the things while we're scrutinized and the other colleges across the state are going to be looked at, and we're going to be held to the fire to make sure we're doing everything we possibly can. And again, I'm not saying I'm disappointed in us by any means, I think we really are exceptional in many ways compared to most. But we are going to be looked at, and one of my biggest priorities is to keep local control. If it goes to somebody who says, hey, you know, across the board, I'm not seeing what I like to see, let's figure out some, something that, we're going to take away control from the local community colleges. Many other states don't have, you know, local boards that make decisions. We have, they have advisory boards, ceremonial roles, they have Board of Regents that make all the decisions for these community colleges. And so my point is, we're under the microscope as much as we've been in my four years here. Now, we have a 20% increase over four years. I'm not going to say that that's the worst thing, and I bet you we're better than pretty much any taxing entity in Johnson County. We're probably the best.
I wonder how KU did.
Yeah. And so, I don't know either. But what I am saying is that I just want to make sure we did everything we could to prevent any take away from local control, and that's what I'm getting at. That's my main point that I'm making at this point, this time, and this year. So if there's anything we can do, I want to make sure we put our best foot forward as much as ever, this year in particular. And I think we did a good job overall compared to our other four years as well. So I think this is, if we averaged 20% over the last four years and we're around 2.9, this might be our best year, and I'm pretty sure it is our best cut we've done over the four years that I've been here. So, I mean, that's obviously something to hang a hat on, the highlight over the four years. But, yeah, that's why I just want to make sure we're retaining local control as much as we possibly can.
So our time is up. We've exhausted our hour. There are a lot of things I would like to say, but I'm out of time. I will just say this. We're dealing with inflation, which caused us to make decisions to help out our employees by giving them salary increases. Everything we do at this institution is costing more. And so it only stands to reason that we need to have more revenue to do that with. Now is not the time, in my opinion, for us to say, well, let's start spending down our reserves. There is too much going on, to President Corb's point, there's a lot of uncertainty at the state level, there's certainly a lot of uncertainty at the national level. And what I'm seeing happen at the national level, and this is me trying not to be political, so I'll just make this brief statement. My grass is too high, I get out my lawnmower, I don't get out my combine. And I don't want us to be the combine drivers. I want us to get out our lawnmower and cut what needs to be cut. And I feel like that's been done responsibly, as it always is, and that's why I support this proposal for the mill levy reduction. So with that, we're out of time, right? All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
That concludes our budget workshop. And next on the agenda is our open forum. The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak, in which case the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door 15 minutes prior to each regularly scheduled board meeting. And when addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes or otherwise the subject of review by the college or board. Do we have any registered speakers? We do not. So there are no registered speakers at tonight's podium, so we will close the open forum section of the board agenda, which takes us to our board reports. And first up is Logan Grigsby with the Student Senate report. Is this our last time of seeing you?
I believe not, but I may have the new president give the presentation, but I think I'm going to at least be here with him, so he can be here, and hopefully maybe I can say a little farewell. But yeah, definitely, definitely in the process of handing over the presidency, so. With that, I guess I will talk about the election results. We held our election the first week of April and have a new executive team for the 25, 2026 school year. President Oliver Gonzalez, Vice President Tony Wong, Secretary Soraya Shirzad, Parliamentarian Angelina Kamaguchi, and the Treasurer Privilege Ms. Bamboi. With that, it's been a pretty slow month. We're kind of getting to the end of the year, everybody's kind of stressed out, so clubs aren't really forming right now, so no new clubs and organizations. We have received a couple budget requests that we've approved, the Student Veteran Association's Top Golf Celebration Event, as well as the Black Student Union's Poetry Slam Event. In other news, we are hard at work on our service projects. We will be having Service Week the last week of this month. We will be volunteering to work with Clear and Connect. We will be doing a hygiene kit drive for Midwest Recovery Center, and we will be volunteering at Growing Futures Early Education Center. We are also hard at work on Clubbies, which will be Friday, May 2nd. This is Interclubs' annual Oscars celebration, where clubs and organizations are invited to nominate each other, nominate themselves for Best Club, Most Active Club, Best Event, Most Student-Oriented Vent, and things like that. And we kind of just give back to those clubs and celebrate their success. We cater in food for everybody, so it's kind of like a little party thing, the Oscars of the clubs. So I think that is everything I have for you guys tonight, so I leave my time to the floor for questions.
That was shorter than usual, Logan. Thank you for your report. Any questions or comments for Logan? Go right ahead, Trustee Smith-Everson.
Logan, please pass on my dearest wish that everyone not be stressed out and, you know, able to find inner peace as they move through finals and get to graduation for some, including yourself. And I just wanted to know, will there be a red carpet at the Clubbies? I mean, how Oscars are we going here?
I sure hope so. I will personally go and I will talk to the CSI tomorrow and tell them that that is mandatory that they have.
Can we eat like a glam bot, you know? I mean, we should thank this all out, get all the details. Well, thank you so much, and if we don't get to hear from you next month, I just wanted to say, it's been a pleasure. You have brought such great spirit and energy and helped us really understand all the wonderful things going on with Student Senate, so thanks so much.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Trustee Cross and then Trustee Jennings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to concur with Trustee Smith-Everson. I was going to say, you give me energy, man. Thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you. I appreciate that.
Trustee Jennings.
On the Service Week, I was told that there's going to be like a little flyer of packages that they're putting together and things that are needed.
Yes.
So how does that go out?
I believe we have a personal liaison after we've wrapped up all of them, we personally send somebody out to go and deliver it. It's just in Kansas City, I believe, but yeah, they're close by, so we just wrap everything up, put it in like a little tub and just directly take it over there.
Items that go in those things?
Yeah.
Anybody can contribute?
Yeah, there's an Amazon wishlist, or you can bring stuff, bring goods into the CSI.
Okay.
But yeah, there's also an Amazon wishlist, so you can just go on there and order things directly from there, or personally buy and bring stuff into the CSI. But they're looking for like travel-size hygiene kits, toothpaste, so obviously a lot of these people are coming in off their backs, so, with nothing on their backs but the clothes on their backs, so anything kind of helps.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Logan? I have enjoyed your report every month throughout your tenure. I would echo what Trustee Cross and Trustee Smith-Everson have said. You bring energy to the podium. I always enjoy hearing what you have to say, and I always learn something new about some group I didn't even know we had, or something that students are doing, giving back to the community. It's always been a pleasure, so we're going to miss you, but I'm sure that your successor will bring us a great report every month as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you guys so much for your time. You guys have a wonderful rest of your evening.
Thank you.
That brings us to the College Lobbyist Report and Mr. Dick Carter.
Bring that energy.
I think this is going to be interesting.
Normally I don't do a PowerPoint presentation, but I have a few slides this evening that I think will work from as I make some comments about the wrap-up portion of the legislative session. And this evening, I'll be looking at the last sentence in Churchill's statement and try to explain why things didn't happen the way maybe we thought they would. I'll look at four general areas, the changes to the 2025 session that sort of dictated the way issues played out and what we dealt with in Topeka, what the legislature's top issues were. That doesn't mean JC CC's top issues, but what the legislature's top issues were and how that impacted the outcomes that the college saw. And then a little bit about what's next. The makeup, we talked about around election time last year, and everyone, including legislative leadership, I think was of the mindset that they might lose a couple of folks on each body in the Senate and in the House as far as the majority is concerned. Actually, the opposite, as you are aware, played out, and the supermajority grew even more. And so I think that that has a significant impact on the way, especially when we talk about some of the veto overrides that I'll mention a little bit later, how those played out. So again, the Senate picked up two additional Republicans and the House picked up three, for a total of 31 to 9 in the Senate and 88 to 37 in the House. The other issue that was a major change this session was the legislatively-driven budget process. So historically in Kansas, the governor proposes budget recommendations sometime during the second week of the legislative session when she gives, or when the governor gives the State of the State address. The legislature wanted to get a jump on that process and begin that budget development process on their own, which meant that staff in the Legislative Research Department, as well as the Revisers Office who write the bills, they're already, they're already working on writing those bills when the governor's budget recommendations come into play. It did add to their workload, which increases the stress level around the State House a little bit. And so we dealt with, not only were they doing the job that they already perform as far as policy research and budget research for state agencies, and writing what the bill looks like. You can talk about the policy on one side, the lawyers and the Revisers Office have to figure out how to put it into a- figure out how to put it into a form that becomes the bill. So you've got the budget development process that played out differently this year than it has in past years. And it was a little bit rocky, and we talked about that. The speaker said it's going to be a rocky start likely. We'll see how it plays into next year's budget development process now that they've gone through this process in one year. The other issue that impacted the way business was dealt with in Topeka was the accelerated 90-day session. We still met for 90 days, but instead of counting Monday through Friday, we counted all days. And that meant the legislature adjourned signee die last Friday on the 89th day, about three and a half weeks earlier than it might normally. People have asked, why do they do that? I think there's a number of reasons. One, if you're a legislator, you're always running for office, and so fundraising cannot occur until after signee die. That's one reason. I think also, when you advance the schedule or accelerate the schedule, there's less time for games. And I think we definitely saw that this year as well. And that might be one of the positive outcomes for an accelerated schedule in the legislative process. But I would also say, and I think some legislators were a little bit frustrated, especially the new ones that got elected promising the voters when they were going door-to-door that they were going to do certain things, and they didn't really have the opportunity to do some of that. I think we will have a very robust interim committee scheduled this summer and fall as a result of many of the things that did not get vetted in the regular portion of the legislative schedule for the past 90 days. So we'll start seeing what that looks like here within the next month or so. So the legislature had its own set of priorities, and we've talked about some of them this evening as you were dealing with the budget workshop process. And one of those is property tax. That's been a big buzzword this entire session. It was a big buzzword in the campaign. It continued to be talked about. There were a number of different proposals out there. The Senate had its own version of what that might look like. They also had a constitutional amendment on the Senate side that would have capped valuation, annual valuation increases at 3%. That's a little difficult when you're looking at a county like Johnson County, or some of the other counties that have some more robust development in their communities. They also introduced a bill that would ultimately be the only one that made its way through the process as far as property tax reduction is concerned, and that was to reduce or eliminate the 1.5 statewide mill levy on educational building funds and state institutions' building funds. And so when we talk about state institution building funds, we're really talking about the School for the Deaf and the School for the Blind over here in the northeast corner of the state. The Educational Building Fund, which would receive one mill, was for the purpose of renovating and/or dealing with delayed maintenance at state university buildings. So that 1.5 mills would be calculated statewide, doesn't impact the local mill levy at all, but that is one that ultimately did pass and make its way through the process. House had a different constitutional amendment. They wanted to institute sort of a rolling average approach for property valuations. Again, that measure never really made its way through the process in its entirety. And then they also had a couple of other methods for reducing property tax. One would have been to institute a similar process that we used to call LAVTR, the Local Ad Valorem Tax Refund Program, or Transfer Program, which the legislature abolished after not funding it for about 23 years, 24 years. This would have been sort of a similar fund with a little bit of a different process. Again, that bill did not make its way through the process, nor did the House also introduce a 1.5 statewide mill levy reduction to the statutory 20 mills the state collects for K-12 education. So that's kind of how the property tax game played out. I think we'll be talking a lot about property tax this summer and some different methodologies. We'll be revisiting everything that we heard in the process this year at the legislature. But we'll see what the recommendations are that come out of that interim process as they make their recommendations to the 2026 legislature. The budget process was definitely awkward and probably not reflective of what the committee process has looked like in the past. Overall, the budget was mostly directed by the leadership, and while there are still budget subcommittees, they didn't necessarily have to perform all of the tasks that they've done in the past. A lot of it was handled in the mainstream budget committees in the House and in the I would say that the House did actively compare the governor's budget recommendations to the legislative budget recommendations, and in different places did interweave some of the governor's budget recommendations into the budget process. Reducing the regulatory environment was another big buzzword. This is happening in states all across the United States. It's boilerplate legislation that legislators hear about at some of the conferences that they attend. It's not necessarily a bad thing, reducing the regulatory environment for small businesses, but some of those initial or early proposals could have impacted even some of the training programs that we perform here at the college. They did not make their way through the process, but if you talk about reducing educational requirements, or changing the way some of that training looks like, whether it's in allied health or in some of the technical trades, those definitely could have an impact on the college. Similarly, and closely related to the regulatory environment is government efficiency, and there are a couple of committees that were, one in the House was appointed much later on, but the Senate had a Government Efficiency Committee, similar to the DOGE Committee that you hear a lot about in the media, is going on at the national level. The committee had a couple of bills that worked on streamlining processes for state agencies. I think not a huge impact this first year, but there's already a committee meeting next week in the interim for the House Government Oversight Committee, and we'll see what plays out there as far as what the agenda begins to look like. That will be a new process there that we haven't really seen before. Overall, the legislature introduced 742 bills this session. Bills were resolutions. The governor signed 114 bills and allowed eight to become law without her signature. About 18 bills were vetoed, plus approximately 31 line items in the budget bill. The legislature overrode 16 of those vetoes and 15 of the budget vetoes that were in the budget line. So what does that look like for Johnson County Community College? We already talked about this a little bit in the budget workshop. The funding levels for FY26 are roughly the same as they were in 2025, with the exception of some of those student success and apprenticeship dollars that we won't see flowing this way. And part of that, too, has to do with a budget proviso that was added at one point in the process. And early on, our understanding was that it applied to all of the state funding streams in that process, including the operating dollars that we would see in the tiered and non-tiered dollars that come our way. And I think one of the concerning things as we look at how that process played out, at legislative request, the Board of Regents staff assisted with writing that proviso. And so when we talk about the body that oversees the coordination of higher education, I think the conversation that you're having around the table with regard to the budget is very important as we look at what that process looks like and as it plays out in Topeka and those that are a part of the environment in which we operate. So that is concerning, to say the least. Some good news, the college played an active role in seeking amendments to some of the driver ed training programs, both in the motorcycle area. That's where the bill originally started out, along with the help from the Department of Revenue. Their recommendation was similar to our suggestion, that they expand that to just the standard class of driver's education as well, meaning that we will have the ability to keep and/or hire driver instructors that have a license from another state, and presently we're not allowed to. So that will help in our recruitment and retention efforts, and those are popular programs. This does not touch the CDL, so don't confuse this with any of the CDL programs. There were no changes made in the revenue-neutral rate budgeting process. There'll be a slight tweak, I believe, on the calendar dates, but nothing that impacts what we're doing. We're still observing the same calendar dates. It has to do more at the county level when they're sending out some of the notices. I don't think it impacts our process very much at all. Amendments were made to the Kansas Promise Scholarship Act that would expand the eligibility of institutions to private for-profit institutions. That bill made its way through the process at the very last hours of the veto session last Friday. And the good news about that is that part of the bill also increased the funding levels, the account levels, from 10 million to 15 million, so it added 5 million. However, the legislative budget committees did not appropriate that extra 5 million. So if that bill becomes law by governor's signature, there will be the ability to expand that program, but not the expanded dollars, at least this fiscal year. So that's something that we'll be watching as well. And then finally, again, another topic that was discussed a little bit earlier in the conversation was local control. It's frequently under attack in the State House, and two bills were introduced in the Senate that specifically addressed some of the concerns that Trustee Hamel raised as far as whether or not you become an advisory board, or you still have the ability to run as a trustee to make the fiscal, the fiduciary decisions on behalf of the electorate in Johnson County. So those are some of the things that I think we'll continue to see play out in future sessions, and something that obviously we'll be on high alert for. The good news, and maybe a nice way to end the report this month, is the celebration that we were able to have on the very last day of the legislative session, where the House and the Senate honored the women's basketball team in recognition of their championship. And I'd like to really thank the two representatives that the college sits in their district. Representative Featherstone coordinated that effort on behalf of the House, and Senator Holsher coordinated that effort in the Senate. And we certainly appreciate, and if you look in the pictures, at least in the House, the Senate operates a little differently. Senators speak from their desk. In the House, they speak at what is called the "well," and that's the podium where you see Representative Featherstone in the light purple color on the left picture. But many of the Johnson County delegation members came up and surrounded the team as they were being recognized. And then finally, we were able to spend some time in the governor's office, and I really do mean spend some time. It was nice that she engaged with the team. She had a picture of her college basketball experience that you can see. She's showing to the team, and she's explaining to them that during that timeframe, there were six players on the court, and two were not allowed to cross half-court. And so it was fun to watch the women as they were listening to this story. And then finally, she read a proclamation honoring the basketball team. And so that was really a nice way to cap off the session. So what's next? Consensus Revenue Estimating Group met today. Hopefully, we'll see an article later on this evening. We'll see the memo tomorrow morning, at least the short version of the memo. I don't know if it'll all be available, but they're going to be taking a look at what the revenue picture looks like for the state of Kansas. The legislature overrode one of the governor's vetoes on a change to individual income tax. That plan sets up a sort of a trigger mechanism, that if revenues come in at a certain level, then tax rates automatically come down on individual income tax rates. We'll see. It has a fiscal impact to the budget and was not accounted for as the budget development process was moving forward. So I think, I expect that we'll see a revenue estimate that is revised downward when those numbers come out, when that memo comes out later on today or tomorrow. Interim committee topics are going to be significant and many, so we'll be very busy, I think, this summer and fall. This is not an election year. If it were an election year, I don't think we would see very many, even though a lot of things didn't get handled this year in the legislative process. That process, legislators are making their requests. Some of the interim topics are facilitated by bills or statutory, but those requests will be vetted throughout May, probably. The Legislative Coordinating Council meets, that's the legislative leadership that meets to talk about administrative issues when the legislature's not in session. And they will make the recommendations on what committees will be heard, will be allowed to meet throughout the course of the summer. And then finally, the Blue Ribbon Panel that was also referenced earlier was added as a budget proviso to the budget. It was a standalone bill, it did have a hearing in the House, but the mechanism that creates the Blue Ribbon Panel was added to the budget bill, which provides a number of different appointments by legislators to begin the facilitation of looking at the two-year college system and what the face of that looks like. And I think it will be different moving forward. I think the recommendations that come out will definitely be different than it looks today. That's not entirely bad. I think it's the discomfort in not knowing what that looks like right now, today. So that's probably a good place to stop. Some of that's a 30,000-foot view, but that's the impact that the session has had, will have on the college this year. And so I'd stop there and see if there's any questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dick. As always, very informative. Love the PowerPoint, so.
Don't get used to it.
It was like, every month?
Yeah, right? I'm thinking every month. You know what they say, an expert is somebody 50 miles from home with a PowerPoint, so see. Any questions or comments for Mr. Carter? Trustee Smith Everett and then Trustee Cross.
Thank you. I just had, one, I wondered if you've heard rumblings that you think the leadership is going to proceed again next session with a 90-day approach. I mean, in the end, I almost don't want to say this out loud, it sort of was beneficial in that you couldn't get all the noise and other special projects out into the mainstream and the news, and there wasn't a lot of time. And so for us as, you know, JCC and the secondary education arena, I think we did okay considering there was a lot more noise at the beginning, and the 90-day thing didn't allow for a whole bunch of other things to arise. Any ideas?
Yeah, I think they will. I mean, next year is an election year for the House. They run every two years, and so, once again, the sooner that you get in, do the business, and get out, those folks can be out knocking on doors, and the important piece there is fundraising, because that's a lot of what goes on into getting elected to office. So yeah, I think we'll see, I think we'll see another session of that accelerated schedule, if you will.
Okay, thanks. Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the Blue Ribbon Panel that I know KACC supported, what is it exactly they're doing?
The design will be to review the number of, the access to funding streams, products delivered by the two-year sector, and there are a number of, I didn't bring the details with me as far as how the appointments are laid out, but legislative leadership has the ability to then assemble this panel that will take a look at what the two-year college sector looks like. And I think the thought was, it's definitely better to be at the table and certainly at the beginning of that process versus being dictated to what that could look like otherwise.
So we don't know if it's true that they want us to merge with Pitt State or some other Regent School?
I think you're hearing a little bit of different conversations that might occur in the hallways, that never were, that never were bills, or never were products of legislation. And I think it's, you're always going to hear that, and I think discernment is the key there in figuring out what is realistic in moving forward and what is being said for comment.
Yeah, and I've got you on the spot, and I apologize for that, but we don't know if it's true that they want to close Butler County Community College?
Yeah, I can't speak to, I think that's one of the reasons why. I think that's one of the reasons why it makes sense to, I don't know that any college is specifically called out, but I think when you look at the overall model that was developed in the '60s, you know, the way we deliver the product looks very different today. And so whether it's proximity, whether it's size, whether it's property tax level, there's a whole host of things that go into that review that I think will occur.
So we don't know if it's true that they just want to absorb us and take control of our revenue stream because?
Does anybody get to cross-examine after you're done?
Yeah, I'm just asking you. I mean, these are the things that we're hearing. So a crowd that doesn't like government wants to expand government and then take over our revenue stream because Kansas has got to have the goofiest tax structure in the world.
That's, we could talk about that in the next budget workshop, I suppose.
We don't know if that's true, right?
Yeah, no, I think that anything that we hear is certainly what happens in Topeka. There's always these different undercurrents that you pick up on or that you hear. What we do know is we'll have the opportunity to put our best foot forward, hopefully with this opportunity to see what the Blue Ribbon Panel looks like.
Thank you.
One note on that Blue Ribbon Panel, it says that they're going to address topics that are in House Bill 2402. So they have about six bullet points for that House Bill 2402.
They took the language that was in House Bill 2402 and just made it in the form of a proviso and put it on the budget bill.
Trustee Jennings.
I had a question about the Kansas Promise Scholarship Amendment. So if I understand it right, from what you shared, they are going to expand or looking at expanding that program to private institutions?
I believe that there's a couple of schools in the Wichita area that are private for-profit institutions or operations that some legislators wanted to see be given the opportunity to participate in the Promise Scholarship Act. The legislature ultimately then acted on that bill. It was Senate Bill 44 to begin with. I think it ended up being Senate Bill 24 in the end, or a conference committee report on Senate Bill 24. I'm not sure which one it was, but it was 24 was the bill number at the very end of the session. And in doing so, not only did they, the Board of Regents must approve whether or not those schools are allowed to participate in Kansas Promise. And then it made the provision to increase the ceiling of the fund account by 5 million, but the 5 million was not appropriated.
So, but they did vote to expand the program or it's still?
They did.
Okay, they're just not going to increase?
At least not this fiscal year. I think that request will come next year as well. Because if you increase the number of people that have a chance to eat a piece of the pie, you probably ought to grow the pie a little bit, too, if you're going to look at that.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Carter? At the risk of beating a dead horse here at the Blue Ribbon Panel, do you have a sense, and maybe I should know this and I just don't, but do you have a sense as to the timeline? And I mean, two different pieces of the timeline, really. One, when we'll have some idea who, the construct of the panel, who's been appointed? I think that might be important for us to know our audience, so to speak. And then any sense at all on how long they're going to take to do their work before they spit out their product?
Yeah, I think that the goal in House Bill 2402 was to take the interim and produce that report for the 2026 legislature. We'll be finding out soon what those appointments look like, and certainly I'll continue to include information related to that review panel in my updates to the Board as the summer progresses. And we'll be watching very closely how that plays out, and I'm sure that we'll make sure that we have coverage wherever those meetings are occurring. That's the other thing. We don't know if the meetings will be happening across the state or if they'll all be held in the State House. And that all depends on what legislative leadership decides based on the parameters that are inside the legislation, what they're allowed to do.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Carter. Safe travels back to Topeka. All right, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is our College Counsel Report, and Jason Arnett. Good to see you, as always, Jason.
Thank you, glad to be here. I'm not going to go as long as Dick did, so. College Counsel met yesterday, and I had to prioritize my day job, and I wasn't able to go yesterday, but Caitlin Crumsey ran the meeting very well for us yesterday, I guess. So I'm very pleased to have her in that role. I want to remind you, I mentioned this last month, Staff Counsel is hosting an open house next Tuesday at 2:00 PM. There should be an invitation coming to you, so we hope that some of you will be able to come. It's 2:00 in the Colab, which is also known as OCB 100, and everybody is invited, so. In shared governance, Staff Counsel learned that a request that had come through their portal has resulted in a fourth parking space for expected mothers on campus, and that's on the east side of the Student Center, I'm told, so, which is good news. College Counsel is, of course, spending its time reviewing its bylaws and working on overall communication, preparing to make some changes that will bring it into compliance with the college's guidance for councils, committees, and task forces. So we're heading in that direction, I think. And then just, you know, while we don't have a precise diagram yet, I told you last month we're still working on how the communication flows, being able to illustrate it to everybody. It does work very well, and in that capacity, it helps to build trust in the processes of shared governance. We had a good interaction. Some points were brought to us by a member of College Counsel. That resulted in conversations with Cabinet. Cabinet sent suggestions back, and everybody seems to be happy with how it worked. So it's a good thing. So, and then I want to say that Lisa Elsner and her family are over the moon to have been honored tonight, so thank you so much for doing that for her. We do appreciate that and dining, so. And that's all I have for you, so.
All right, thank you for that. Any questions or comments for Jason? I would just say this, just as a way of, by way of commentary, shared governance has to be more than a structure, and I think we all realize that. And so hearing that there was a success and that it actually worked, I think is imperative. Having the structure is one thing, but making it truly functional so that it's serving the purpose it's designed to serve is something entirely different. And that depends upon the people within the structure of shared governance to carry that out. So I'm glad to hear that there was at least a success that we can tout a bit, so.
Yeah, we had a good win this month.
All right, thank you for that. Thank you so much, Jason.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right, next on the agenda is the Faculty Association Report, and Melanie Harvey. We haven't heard from you in a long, long time, so good to see you.
May I say something before she?
You may.
Okay, just very quickly, I just want to let you know that our presenter, Dr. Melanie Harvey, is the 2025 KNEA Higher Educator of the Year. It's my reward. Andrea said, would you like to come and brag about the faculty to the board? And I was like, okay, because I love to talk about our faculty and our students, so, but thank you, Judy. Yeah, so it's a new award, KNEA, just to, this is their first time giving an award to higher educator, and I'm really honored to be recognized for that. And it's, they have a number of awards that they give to, you know, like K through 12 folks, but this is the first time. So anyway, it's an honor and I appreciate it. And I also like to brag about faculty, so I told Andrea, sure, I'll come to the board and talk about them. So I have some different things I want to talk about. First of all, JCC's Model United Nations Team won an Outstanding Delegation Award at the National Model United Nations Conference in New York. It is one of the most prestigious Model UN conferences in the world. It brings together global higher education institutions such as McGill University, Florida Atlantic, BYU, UC Riverside, TCU, John J. College, University of Montreal, College of Worcester, Washington University in St. Louis, and Washington State. Students prepare position papers and engage in a simulation of the work of the United Nations, which requires strong interpersonal communication, critical thinking, and writing skills. And JCC has a long history of success with Model United Nations Conferences. The team also hosts the Metro KC Model UN Conference for our local and regional K through 12 students. On April 1st, about 350 middle and high school students came to campus to participate in the conference. Our Model UN team runs the conference alongside their faculty advisor, Dr. Brian Wright. And so, you know, just a big shout out to the Model UN team and Dr. Wright for all of their hard work and for the way that they also create a place for our K through 12 local schools to come and dream about things and learn. Art History Professor Allison Smith organized another successful night at the Nelson, and we are the only local college that has the opportunity to partner with the Nelson Atkins Museum. This event had JCC employees volunteering to present a selected work of art at the Nelson. Over 500 JCC faculty, staff, students, and their guests attended this fun and engaging discussion of world-class art. So that's another great event hosted by our art historian, Allison Smith. The annual Buzz Into Education event was last week on campus. This event is a partnership between JCC's Center for Future Educators, directed by Dr. Craig Butler, and Emporia State University, and aims to encourage and mentor students considering becoming K-12 teachers, K through 12 teachers. This year, there were over 270 students from around the KC metro area participating in the event. Speakers included the 2024 and 2025 Kansas Teachers of the Year, and they had tables from school districts like Shawnee Mission, Blue Valley, KCK, Gardner Edgerton, to help them recruit future educators to teach in their schools. So we always want to encourage folks to go into education. Cav Craze is Wednesday, May 7th, if you want to put that on your calendar. It's from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Department's clubs, resource centers, and others will set up tables all around the Comm Plaza to engage with students. And there's a bunch of activities, snacks, karaoke, an overall jovial atmosphere to close out another successful year. So that is on May 7th. And then I want to talk a little bit about science since they invite me to come here. I'm like, okay, I'm going to talk about my science people a little bit. We are terrible at self-promotion, but yet there's some amazing things happening in science all the time. There is a big event coming up soon, and I'll get to that, but first I want to say, so I have, I'm a PI with, along with my co-PI Heather Seitz. She's a professor of microbiology here for a National Science Foundation grant, and we are in the third year of a four-year grant. And this grant, our project is entitled Building a Sustainable Community College Cure Program. And what that means is course-based undergraduate research experience. It's where you embed research into a regular science class. And so students that take the class, they get to do a research project, and they don't have to have extra time or money outside of their regular classes they're taking to get to do this research experience. And so Heather and I have been doing this, just a little history. She started in her classes around 2015, and she was just doing a little poster session in class. And then I looked at the history recently because I presented at a conference, but in 2016, we started combining my class. I started a collaboration, and her class and my class would, had a little poster session, and I found the email where I invited the board and the president and some people to come. And then by the spring of 2017, we had, we had combined, you know, several microbiology classes, and our colleagues Brenda Edmonds and Lori Slavin started the Science and Math Poster Symposium in the spring. And so because we need something every semester because it's with a course, we started the Cures one in the fall, and this, it's now the STEM Poster Symposium that's coming up in the spring. So Lori and Brenda Edmonds and Lori Slavin put that on in the spring for us. And so all of our students go to that. The STEM one in the spring has some other students, too, that do projects in other courses beyond just these science cure projects. But just our Fall Cure Poster Symposium that we had, with our grant, we have expanded these course-based undergraduate research experiences. We had 14 faculty that have participated in our grant these three years, and they've piloted 13 new cure projects in eight new courses, and it resulted in our total for our Cure Poster Symposium in the fall was 377 students that presented 279 posters of research that they had done just in the fall semester. So the Poster Symposium is going to be those classes, a new round of students, of course, and other STEM presentations from honors to independent, I have an independent research student that's going to present. We've got some engineering projects, some math classes that are presenting projects that they've done. And the STEM Poster Symposium is Thursday, May 1st in the Colab. There are going to be sessions all day and into the evening, so 7:30 AM to 8:00 PM on May 1st. And this one is so far, let me tell you the numbers on this one. So there's 18 sponsors that have donated $15,000 in scholarship money. So there will be students that will be competing for scholarships as they present their posters as a kind of a side thing. The posters will be in astronomy, chemistry, mathematics, biology, geosciences, engineering, STEM scholars, presentations, HCIS, environmental science, and honors. There'll be 520 student presenters. We have 109 judges, judges from our faculty and staff, some external judges from some local places. There's 30 faculty mentors represented by these students, and they're going to be giving 10 to 15 scholarships awarded to the students. So there'll be some $1,000 scholarships, $500 scholarships and such. I know that trustee Ratan and trustee Jennings have already agreed to judge and welcome and assist with that. We really appreciate you doing that. The scholarship reception, if you want to put it on your calendar, will be May 12th from 1:00 to 1:30 in RC 270. May 12th, 1:00 to 1:30, RC 270. And then the last thing I wanted to brag on is my colleague Heather Seitz. She does a lot of things that go under the radar, but there's one that she's been working on for two years, and it is the, it's the algae prize. The Department of Energy has this algae prize contest, or has had this algae prize contest. And I just want to give you the update that I can give you, but I wanted to brag a little bit about it. There's five JCC students, JCC students, five of them, and they've been working on this project for two years. And what they did was, the algae prize is like, you're supposed to do something novel with algae, and there's some criteria, but their project was, they proposed basically genetically modifying some algae to produce an enzyme that degrades microplastics so that you could put it in a stream or a place like that, and it would degrade microplastics. So this is their project. And they worked on it for two years. They've submitted a 25-page research paper. They did a video presentation. They submitted all this stuff because they were a semifinalist. So they basically, early in the contest, they decide on 15 projects that they want to fund, and they were given money to work on this. So they're a semifinalist, and they're supposed to go last week and compete in Golden, Colorado for this contest to see the top winners get money. And right now, the Department of Energy is like, we are not doing anything. We are going to wait and see. We might have the contest sometime. We might not. And that's where they are. They're on hold. If we get a definite, like, it's not going to happen, then we'll have a big party and you guys can see their presentations, but we'll invite the public and everybody, but right now it's on hold until, see if they get to compete or not. But I want to say that their project was successful. They will definitely publish it at some point, and it's kind of one of those, I just wanted, I feel like somebody should know that this is like one of those things where our students, they worked really hard on this, and they don't get to follow through because the current administration is just randomly freezing everything, you know, for some areas. So this is one of those that was put on hold. But anyway, if you see Dr. Heather Seitz, you can ask her for updates, but I'm super proud of the work that they did and the fact that their project was so successful. It's really pretty exciting research, and, you know, anybody who thinks that we don't do research at community college has not been around this place enough. But we're doing, our students are the best, and our faculty can just, if you have an idea or want to, you know, work with students, you've got such a great pool of enthusiastic people that are super smart and capable, and I'm excited to work with them myself, so. So anyway, that's the rest of my report.
Terrific report. Thank you so much, Dr. Harvey. Any questions for Dr. Harvey? Yes, Trustee Jennings and then Trustee Ratan.
I just want to say thank you. And the STEM presentation was so much fun last year, so I'm really excited to do it again. It's just the energy in that room is pretty incredible, and the posters are also pretty incredible with what the students learned.
My favorite thing is to see even my own students, how transforming the experience is because once they present their work, it's like even our non-science majors are like so excited about what they did. It's very, it gives them a lot of confidence. It's confidence building. It's really exciting to see it.
It is. And I just want to thank you for giving a really good example of how government efficiency affects all of us and affects us at the Johnson County Community College.
Trustee Ratan and then Trustee Cross.
Thank you for your energy about science. It's palpable. I do want to just put a little bit of emphasis on, I don't know if it's Dr. or Mr. Craig Butler and his passion for educating future educators. If you've never met him and talked to him, he's very serious about putting quality educators out in the world. And then I also want to say that the cure and STEM growth over the years that I've been able to watch it is really magnificent and inspiring. And again, you're putting great people onto the world who not only did a science research, but then there's that soft skill of presenting your work to both scientists and non-scientists and making sure that people understand it. And that is a skill that is under, underappreciated, and you are also imparting that skill to these students as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I don't think anybody will ever know your role and everything you've done here and everything you do here, but let me just say thank you. And it's, it's fun to see you back at that podium. Algae, does it really contribute 70 to 80% of the Earth's oxygen?
So I would say I don't know the answer to that because I'm not a microbiologist. But that sound, I do know that algae is kind of amazing and that it grows really fast.
That's why you get the buzz at the ocean, right? Everybody's always excited when you get to the ocean.
I feel like I'm not qualified to answer that question.
I don't care that you're a chemist. Don't you know this? Like...
I don't really know about algae. My friend, is it Jay? Do you know?
No, I was going to say...
Okay. So my friend Heather, if she was here, she would tell you. You can ask her next time you see her. But I do know algae is kind of amazing, and that's one of the reasons why they developed this prize was because you can do all kinds of things from using it for energy to, I mean, it's like, it's kind of amazing and it grows really fast.
It's pretty important.
Yes, it's very important.
Thank you for your presentation, yes.
Trustee Ratan and then Trustee Smith.
I have one more thing. There's presentations at ACCT, and I just don't know if this is cutting edge, if we're benchmarking our best practices like we always are at JCC. I would love to see something like this, how you're getting students to do research at a future ACCT conference.
Nominate you.
Nominate.
Dr. Harvey.
We've got to have a trustee.
You know, we, Heather Seitz and I would love to go, either of us, to talk about how we've expanded research here. It's been our passion, and I recently just went to the American Chemical Society Convention in San Diego, and I did talk about our grant and how successful it's been already. That was one of my presentations. But yeah, we're definitely interested in, in sharing that because we are doing, I can definitely say after being there that we are doing some very innovative things. The National Science Foundation doesn't fund you if you don't have something that other people haven't already done, overdone. So our approach and everything is unique enough that, that we were able to get that grant. So it is some, and it's been very successful. So, yeah.
Excellent idea.
Excellent.
Trustee Smith-Everett.
I will just keep my comment brief. It occurred to me as you just ran through all the list of all the amazing things that our faculty are a little bit like janitors. They walk around with a set of keys, and they have the ability to unlock for our students things that our students don't even know about, would not have exposure to, would not have the ability to participate in, to achieve, to be a part of. And we owe that, that unlocking to the magical, wonderful things that our faculty know about and want to ensure that our students get to be part of. So thank you so much for sharing all the story of all the various keys that are carried around and unlock wonderful things for our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Mitchell.
I was going to say, I'm kind of bummed to hear that the microplastics issue presentation, I'm assuming at the School of Mines, was put on hold, but the research is still there and it can be built upon. So any idea where it goes from here?
I mean, I know that she's like, she's definitely going to publish it, but I don't know, you know, the students that are part of that team are moving on to, you know, different things with their lives. And so, because we get them for, you know, a short period of time, and then if we're successful enough, they move on to, you know, greater things. So I'm not sure beyond that, but she's always, she's always got some great projects going, and I think that one was, that's one that's definitely worth, you know, doing more with.
Trustee Cross.
One last thing, and I just want to say congratulations, two things. And congratulations to you, and in true Andrew R. V. fashion, way to recognize someone else. So kudos to you.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah. She's been a great, she's been a great FA president. I really admire her. And when she asked me to do this, I was like, you know what? Sure, yeah.
Is it my turn now?
Yes.
No.
First of all, congratulations on your award. That's an incredible honor. You know, Melanie, you and I have been on opposite sides of the table, on the same sides of the table, and, and I've always known you to be a tremendous educator. And so congratulations to you. That is a well-deserved honor for sure. And then I just have two comments. I want to start with the Model UN. Feel like every since I came onto the board many years ago, we've been hearing about the Model UN and how successful they are. And it's almost like we expect that, that they're going to go and they're going to win all these awards. And I, I want to make sure that, that Dr. Wright and his students who participate know that we don't ever take it for granted, the effort, the time and the effort and the energy they put into that to be as successful as they are. The work that, that Dr. Wright over the years has, has put into that is nothing short of amazing to create a year-over-year successful Model UN and give those, those students the opportunity to participate in that. It's really wonderful. And then the Algae Prize, so I can only imagine how deflating it must be to work for two years on a project and not be able to compete in the finals. I guess we can thank DOGE for that, along with a lot of other things that I think only now a lot of people are starting to realize how the impact it's having on our daily lives. But setting that aside, I'd like to find a way to invite them, if they do not get to compete, or if they do get to compete, to invite them to this board meeting, to present to us in their poster, whatever they have, to show what their research is. Not only will they get to share it with us, because I'd love to hear about it, but lots of people out there watch, watch these board meetings, and I'd love for them to have an opportunity to see it as well. So I think we need to see if we can figure out a way to make that happen.
Yeah, I think she's been trying to push for a decision one way or another so that, because they're not really, they made this really cool video, and I've seen it, but, you know, they're not allowed to like show it until they know the contest is, isn't happening or, you know, so it's kind of in limbo land. But yeah, that's definitely, we will, we will definitely let you know because I think their hard work deserves being celebrated. And, and I know our community will show up for that, you know, it's, it's really disappointing. But right now, basically, Department of Energy is like, they're not doing anything until they slowly go through all the stuff and decide what they want to fund and not fund going forward. But in my opinion, they promised these students to, this trip to compete and that, like, they should honor their promises because they promised them at a contest for cash prizes. But, you know, nobody asked us, so.
Well, I think we're seeing a lot of broken promises all over.
Yeah, lots of broken promises. So this is just one of them, and I thought you guys should know that this happened, is happening to ours, some of our students, and also how cool their project is, so.
Yeah, well, keep us posted for sure. I realize they can't, it's all super secret until, you know, you know whether they can compete, but, but we'd love to have them back. Thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
It's always good to see you.
Before she leaves, I might want to connect this back to what was discussed about our approach to financing and what we have done on the campus. The research that Drs. Harvey and Seitz have done over the last six years or so and tying those students to undergraduate research was key to our decision-making in the $40 million we took from our reserves and spent on reworking our science labs, creating a focus on undergraduate research, creating space for the work that they have been doing. That started because of both the STEM Scholar Initiative and the work that these ladies have done with those students in subpar conditions when we started. And so I also want to make sure that we acknowledge that that work has had a major impact on the thinking the administration has put into the way in which we have requested and, and spent the money that you have allotted to us.
Yeah, I will just say that with our science renovation, we did ask for, is there any way we could get a space that's dedicated for student research? And even when you're doing research with an entire class of students, that lab space is going to be a different classroom, like people are going to come in there all through the week, and so you can't leave your stuff in there. So we needed a space where we could take our research and put it in a hood or have it still going during the week until the next time you meet with your students. But also, so there, there's a life science research space and there's a physical sciences research space. And me and several of my colleagues have been using the physical science space a lot. It's like full of people and stuff happening, and Heather Seitz's algae team was like working in that, that life sciences space for like all through the summer even, you know, like they were here working on it. So we've really been using those spaces, like we're really, really grateful for them. I can't imagine not having them now.
Madam Chair, very quickly, Dr. McLeod, in psychology, and it's been 25, 30 years, so give me a little bit of rope, is it structure dictates function, right?
Yes.
Like in biology?
Mm-hmm.
So like you're saying, like what we do really does dictate what we need to be doing.
Yes.
We need to build, we're not just building things for fun.
That is absolutely correct.
Structure dictates function.
Yeah, and you know, since these cures and stuff, we have a nicer instrument lab now, like a bigger space. We've acquired more instruments than we used to have over the last few years, and they are being used by our students in their classes, doing these projects. It's very exciting. It's, it's been really good, and I, a lot of it wouldn't be possible without the, the support, the resources that the institution has prioritized for us. But we're definitely, like, we're using all of it. So, yeah, so I think, and, and our students are, are directly benefiting from it in every way possible. So anyway, so thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you for everything that you do, for sure. This will not be one of our one-hour meetings. Okay, next up, the J-Cert report and Trustee Smith-Everett.
Thank you, J-Cert received 1.9 million in sales tax in March 2025 and distributed 656,000 to each of the three university entities. The March sales tax receipts were fairly consistent with the prior two years. They transferred 20,000 more to each university entity in March than in March 2024 and approximately the same as March 2023. Up to this date, each university entity has received 2.2 million through the first quarter, which is 80,000 more year-to-date than the same period in 2024. I will just make a note that I will be attending the biannual J-Cert meeting on, I believe it's next Monday. As a reminder to this board, we are in, my role on J-Cert is to represent this board as an oversight committee for the recent sales tax that was put into place many years ago, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the date.
2007-ish.
Yeah, okay, 2007, that sounds right, yes. And is set to fund Kansas University clinical trials, K-State Olestra portion, K-State Edwards. And the purpose is that we wanted a research triangle here in Johnson County, and that's what its job is. I will say I pay really close attention at these meetings to their budgets because that's what they present to us is basically, how have they taken this money and used it? What do they use it? When we think about what our budget is and how we use it, it is quite different. And I ask a lot of pretty pointed questions at this J-Cert meeting because our role is oversight in, at this committee. So when I come back next month, I will have an update on that from that meeting. So that concludes my report.
Look forward to that. Any questions or comments for Trustee Smith-Everett?
I would just comment, I have looked that data up. I can be corrected on the specific data. It might have been '08, but I think that for the Blue Ribbon Commission of the state of Kansas, we certainly thank them for their support on J-Cert and, and other projects. But I think the local enthusiasm to support local things is because there is local control, and we know what's going on. And while some of you may think that we're figureheads, so to speak, like we each have varied constituencies, even if some of us are relatively homogeneous. And again, that local enthusiasm, I think, in 25-plus years of local activism, comes from local control. So I just wanted to comment on that.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Those who can make a difference participate, so. All right, thank you for your report. Next up is the foundation report. I'm sorry.
You want to or you want me to?
KACC report with Trustee Cross. Did somebody have a comment?
Well, I just had a quick question for Laura. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I apologize.
I'm curious a little bit about the makeup of the J-Cert. Are you the only elected official in that group?
No, there are three legislators on it, and there is a mayor on it. It was Bone from, Bound Bone from Lenexa. And so there have been jokes, I, no, I will say in frankness, no one else asks questions. I am the only person on this oversight that asks any questions for all the stuff they give to us.
Mike asked questions?
Apparently, that's what Mike did, and so keep, people keep joking, well, glad Mike got replaced with Laura Smith-Everett because she was going to ask the question. So it's a makeup of people that are in certain positions. That's the way the J-Cert oversight was. It was a representative for JCC, a representative from a city, and then three legislators. So I think it's, it's Sykes, Woodard, and there's one more. So it's a senator and two legislators. And yeah, that's, that's the makeup of the board. And then it's the, the CFOs that present to us or the vice chancellors that present to us.
Mike is great at asking questions.
Apparently, yes. Never had the pleasure of serving with him, so.
You know, that's an interesting observation related to participation. I think it was 2008 that J-C, J-Cert was, was formed. And in the beginning, there was a lot of very robust dialogue, but I wonder now if it's just, you know, well, it's there and it's sort of, you know, driving itself down the road, and so it's good that you're there to make sure that the hard questions are being asked, for sure. All right, any other questions or comments for Trustee Smith-Everett? Okay. I will move on then to the KACC report and Trustee Cross.
Do you want me to do it? Either way. Go ahead. Okay.
We had a Phi Theta Kappa luncheon here in Topeka. President Corb and myself represented Johnson County Community College, along with two of our amazing students and their parents. After the lunch, KACC held a meeting and received a legislative update. The next meeting is May 30th and 31st from Atchison at Highland Campus, and I will be in attendance in that one as well.
Thanks for going. Thanks for doing that. And I guess we had a, I see it in Judy's report, we had two students on the...
We did.
All academic?
Yes. So we, we had two students at the PTK luncheon in Topeka, Olivia Mukandjere, which we have met, you have seen her before, and Ashlyn Gwynn. They were both Kansas, all Kansas academic team scholarship recipients. So they received 500 and, $500 there. So that was a really nice celebration there. Yes.
Thank you. I just, thank you for including them.
Awesome. Any questions or comments for Trustee Hamel with respect to the ACC, KACC? And I, I still want to put a T on the end of that. Any questions for Trustee Hamel? Hearing none, now we're ready for the foundation report and Trustee Ratan.
Thank you, Chair Rail. The JCC Foundation will be announcing a partnership with Johnson County First Responders to offer a new scholarship. If an active fire or police officer loses their life in the line of duty in Johnson County, JCC Foundation will offer the scholarship assistance and support for the eligible dependents. Tickets and sponsorships are selling fast for a Match Made in Heaven gala that is scheduled for May 10th. To learn more about the sponsorships for that... To learn more about the sponsorships for that event, visit www.normandmuseum.org/match. Save the date, the third annual SIPs and scholarships event is scheduled for June 26, 2005, at the Wiley Hospitality and Culinary Academy. Sidney Green and Tracy Osborne-Oltjen are co-chairs of the event this year. Please share the invitation with friends and family and RSVP by visiting www.jccc.edu/foundation. You're also invited to attend the JCCC Foundation Scholarship Luncheon, it's always a favorite event, we get to know our scholarship recipients there, so join us on Tuesday, April 22nd in the Capitol Federal Room in the Rainier Center, and the doors will open at 11:30. The JCCC Foundation is partnering with the Fashion Design and Merchandising Department for their annual runway show. This event is already sold out, and it's sold out fast. The event will be at the Wiley Hospitality and Culinary Academy on April 18th. And the JCCC Foundation is hosting their quarterly executive committee and board directors meetings on April 9th and April 15th. That concludes my report.
All right, any questions or comments for Trustee Ratan? Trustee Smith-Evert?
Sorry, but could you just request that there be some tickets held for the trustees for the fashion show? I have yet to get a ticket, year over year, every year, I think of it in April, and by then it's too late. You have to think of it like way ahead of time, which I don't. So I needed them to just like reserve a couple.
Just a couple.
Yeah, oh, I, there's so many great people I want to take to that, because it's such a great exposition of the things they do.
I've been once, and it was impressive.
I've been once, and it was impressive.
Oh, stop showing off now.
Actually twice, but.
Stop.
All right, any other questions or comments? Trustee Mitchell, you good?
I was just going to say, Laura, I'm gone tomorrow.
Oh, stop.
I knew there was something to say.
Ew.
I have two things very quickly. First of all, I am super excited about the Foundation partnering with Johnson County First Responders. You know, we don't lose first responders very often in Johnson County, but losing anyone ever is a true tragedy, particularly to their family. And, you know, as a former first responder, you know, I, we can say we go out there every day knowing that, you know, our lives could, could be lost, but as a practical matter, it's a tragedy that affects all of us. And so I'm really glad that we're going to be able to, to offer some support for dependents of folks who fall in the line of duty. And then I also want to mention, for the SIPs and scholarships, I unfortunately will not be able to be there. Once a year, I take a vacation with my family, and I obviously am not good at timing, because I'm going to be out of, out of town. But I would encourage everybody to go, it is an incredible event. And I would also throw out there, if for some reason you can't be there, you can go on their website, you can make a donation, and I would encourage everybody to do that if they're not going to be able to attend. But it's a super great, it's over at the Culinary Center, how could you go bad, right? So with that, we'll move on to committee reports.
I just wanted to take issue, Madam Chair, I, I think you could argue that your life is full of timing. Well done, so I just wanted to take issue with that.
Thank you for that.
And one thing on the SIPs and scholarships, I want to thank Joy Ginsburg for moving it to a different day than the board meeting.
Who's Joy Ginsburg?
Yes, for sure. Although, having a glass of wine before the board meeting wasn't all bad. Which kind of takes me back to getting a buzz out of the ocean, but I, I'm going to skip the comment that I was going to make about that, and move on to the Collegial Steering Committee report. The Collegial Steering Committee met on April 3rd. Trustee Smith-Evert and I were both there, there was a, we had a robust discussion during the meeting about creating a working agenda for the committee, so that there's just a better structure about what it is that the committee is, is going to take up and consider, and really its purpose within the overall structure of board committees. We ran out of time during that discussion, and so it will carry over into the next meeting, and hopefully we'll all come back with some suggestions as to what that working agenda should look like as we go forward. So hopefully I'll have more news next time. That takes us to the Management and Finance Committee report and Trustee Ratan.
Thank you, Chair Rail. The Management and Finance Committee held their meeting at 8:30 a.m. on Wednesday, April 2nd. The information related to the meeting can be found on pages 1 through 4 in the board packet. The Management and Finance Committee received the following reports from staff. Rob Caffey, Vice President, Information Services/CIO, along with Philip Mine, Executive Director, IT Security, Don Campbell, Director, Project Management Office, and Adam Kayler, Deputy CIO/Executive Director, Academic Technology Services, provided the quarterly Information Services report. Philip Mine discussed security services and activities such as phishing awareness, implementation of multi-factor authentication for students, emerging issues with artificial intelligence, and the proposed FY26 access control replacement. Don Campbell provided an update on the campus card and point-of-sale system implementation project, and Adam Kayler reported on the Team Dynamics 25 engagement, which is designed to simplify support, service requests, and processes. Rachel Leers, Executive Vice President for Finance and Administrative Services, presented a resolution to adopt Kansas Region L Hazard Mitigation Plan. Plan participants in Johnson, Leavenworth, and Wyandotte Counties create and adopt the plan to document hazard mitigation strategies and demonstrate shared commitment to hazard mitigation goals. Adoption of the plan also provides eligibility to pursue mitigation grant funding. Details can be found on pages 35 and 36 in the Consent Agenda portion of the April 17th, 2025 Board Packet. Budget update, Rachel Leers reported that the plan FY2025-26 budget update had been removed from the agenda due to lingering uncertainty around state funding for the college in fiscal year 26. This information will be shared during today's meeting, held today, budget workshop held today. Tom Hall, Associate Vice President, Campus Services and Facility Planning, gave an update on facilities projects from the Capitol Acquisitions and Improvements Matrix Report. The matrix summarizes and monitors budget and actual expenses for campus service projects and includes payments through April 1st of 2025. Management and Finance Committee has the following recommendations to present this evening. Megan Casey presented two recommendations. For the CDL entry-level driver training records management software, it is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal from J.J. Keller for a base year of $31,500 and a total estimated expenditure of $167,238 throughout the renewal options.
I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Smith-Evert, any discussion on this recommendation? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero, you may proceed.
For asphalt and concrete repairs and improvements, it is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the cooperative purchase from R&amp;R Concrete in the amount of $341,763, with an additional 20% contingency amount of $68,353 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total amount of $410,116 for fiscal year 2025.
I so move.
Second. Motion by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Mitchell, any discussion?
Yes.
Trustee Smith-Evert?
I just questioned, are they the only bidder, or why is it we only had one company on this?
It was because we purchased it through the cooperative, the TIPS cooperative that is listed. That means that they've already competitively bid it with a variety of vendors.
I did not do that. Thank you.
Yep, that's okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, Chair Rail, that concludes my report.
Awesome. Any questions or comments for Trustee Ratan before we move on?
Good job.
All right, hearing none, except for good job. Student Success Committee and Trustee Jennings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Student Success Committee met at 9:45 a.m. on Wednesday, April 2nd, 2025, in GEB 137. Ann Daughter, Director of Honors, presented new courses, course modifications and deactivations effective for the 26, 27 academic school year. Details can be found subsequently in the Consent Agenda portion of the Board Packet. Sheila Mopin presented renewal agreements with the, with school districts and the annual affiliation renewal list. Complete details can be found subsequently in the Consent Agenda of the April 17th Board Packet. Sheila Allen, Vice President of Student Success and Engagement, provided an update on guided pathways, Plan My Classes, and new student orientation. Ms. Allen shared successes of the guided pathways initiative, including the new application for admission, transfer guides, and light the fire. She said academic chairs and directors are being trained on using notes, communication features, and reporting in Plan My Classes to enhance student support and communication. Ms. Allen highlighted completion rate data from 2024 that increased 11.4% from 2023. She also shared the successes of the new onboarding services, success coaches, and the new asynchronous.
Synchronous?
Thank you, asynchronous new student orientation. Amy Sellers, Director of Early College Partnerships and Outreach, provided a PowerPoint presentation, presentation update in career-ready and dual-degree programs and career and technical education outreach. Dr. Sellers highlighted the growth of the career-ready program from 23 to 24, 2024, with student enrollment increasing from 68 to 87, and noted that school district partners. She said the dual-degree program also saw an increase in students from 64 in 2023 to 100 in 2024. The dual-degree program allows high school juniors and seniors to earn their associate's degree while enrolled in high school and at Johnson County Community College. Dr. Sellers said over 120 CTEC students and 50 WHCA students attended the Career Ready Information Nights. I would also like to acknowledge that JCC's College Now program, currently under the leadership of Dr. Mitchell, began, they celebrated, excuse me, 40 years on this campus, and that was done on March 31st.
Did you say 40 years?
Forty years.
That's amazing.
They started, I was looking at the information that she shared, and they started with like 87 students, and they're now in the thousands.
That's terrific. All right, any questions or comments for Trustee Jennings and her report? Hearing none, thank you very much for your report, and that takes us to the President's recommendation for action, and we'll start with the Treasurer's Report and Trustee Hamel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Board Packet includes the Treasurer's Report for the month ending of February 28, 2025. Item of note, the ad valorem tax distribution of $4 million was received in March and will be reflected in next month's report. Expenditures of the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. It is the recommendation of the college administration and the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ended February 2025, subject to audit, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Hamel, seconded by Trustee Cross, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero, you may proceed.
That concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That takes us to the monthly report to the Board, and Dr. Corb, and I'm now starting to count down the number of these reports that we will get from you, so I'm savoring each one.
Yes, so three.
I'm well aware of that.
I'm taking this counted, okay.
Right ahead, Dr. Corb.
Okay, so we've already hit some of the things that are in my report, and I'll try to keep this short, but I did want to mention, not in my report, that we did get the news that John Kleek passed away. John Kleek was the second president of Johnson County Community College. He was here from 1975 to 1980. And so, part of our history, a name that you hear, and so he passed away, he was 90 years old, so. So just wanted to make sure that you are aware of that. But I just got back from the AACC conference in Nashville, I think that was actually earlier this week, I'm not sure, but I think that's when it was. And I wanted to mention, because one of the exciting parts there were that Ann Daughter, Director of Honors, and Ashley Gwynn were also there, because Ashley was named one of the top 50 community college students in the nation as a New Century Scholar. So she received $2,250 for that award, and she was there for the, she and Ann were there for the breakfast, and we got to celebrate them along with the other, the other 50 scholars. So it was very cool, and so we were happy to be represented there. And then we've already mentioned Olivia and Ashlyn were both at the PTK luncheon in Topeka. Other, just really quick, AACC highlights, I did attend a session on successful first 100 days for a president, and so I thought that might give us some ideas about things that we might be able to do to make sure that we set things up well for Dr. Mixa. And so I did learn a few things. It was, it was a good session to attend. One of the presenters was Marcus, I can't ever remember how to say his last name, and he is from Barton County Community College here. And so he's just about nine months into his presidency, and so he had a lot of good ideas and was very helpful and offered to, to help if he could help in any way when Tony gets here. But also attended a workforce development, there were several sessions on workforce development, micro-credentials, non-credit-to-credit, things that we have talked about, and so I attended several of those, but it was, it was very exciting to think about this, because when we go over our proposed bridge plan, this is actually in goal number one, strategy four, and it is something that we're really looking at, and it's definitely something that everyone else is talking about as well. A lot of sessions on navigating federal orders and guidelines, but the message was really the same as what we heard when we were at ACCT, everyone is waiting for further clarification. There hasn't been a lot of, of help with that, really. Enrollment, our summer enrollment is underway, but it's really too early to get like a relevant status report of where we are compared to last year, so that, that will be coming. And then fall enrollment starts next week, so we haven't even started that yet. Workforce development, though, you know that they are on a year-long continuous enrollment cycle, and so just to report for them, they are at 94.67% of their enrollment goal, so they are doing very well at this point in the, the year. Their total right now is 17,662, and this time last year, it was 14,405. So they're, they're doing very well. So we, oh, I also wanted to just quickly mention, there will be a press release on the first responder scholarship, but it, it includes police, fire, paramedic, and EMS. So it actually does include, the others two weren't listed, but it does include paramedic and EMS as well, which is, is very exciting, so all first responders, really. We are looking forward to graduations. As the semester winds down, I think last year I had 13 graduations on my calendar, and so we're looking forward to the month of May and getting to celebrate with all of our students. Our graduation speakers have been identified, so our student speaker is Kinley Chapel. She has a very inspiring story, and she is just a great example of why we are all committed to the mission of the community college, because she's just a, a, kind of a perfect story around some of the things that our students go through, and then what they accomplish while they're here. And we're also looking forward to our commencement speaker, who will be a former trustee, Greg Musel. And that concludes.
All right, thank you for your report. You know, graduation is such an exciting time, I mean, that's what we're all here for, right, is to, to watch folks achieve their goals, so I always look forward to it. And hopefully we'll be able to attend several of those ceremonies, because it's always so special. But any questions or comments for Dr. Corb? All right, thank you for your report. That brings us to new business, I don't believe we have any new business, I also don't believe we have any old business, unless somebody tells me otherwise, so that takes us to the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is an opportunity for the Board to to take up in a single motion several items of a fairly routine nature. You've heard mention throughout the committee reports already of things that you will find in the consent agenda of the board packet this month. And the first thing I'll ask is if there's anything within the consent agenda that anyone on the board would like to pull for separate consideration. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion moved by trustee Smith-Evert, seconded by trustee Mitchell. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. That brings us to the end of our regular board meeting, but we do have an executive session. And so, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to, I sort of heard a little bit of a sigh or a groan or something when I said that, but I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss the performance evaluation for a non-elected employee in order to protect the privacy interests of the individual to be discussed under the Personnel Matters of Non-Elected Personnel exception. No action will be taken during this session. Executive session will last for 45 minutes, beginning at 6:50. Well, was 6:55 work for you guys? Will that give you time? Or do you want to make it 7 o'clock?
Perfect.
7 o'clock, I'm hearing 7 o'clock. The executive session will commence at 7:00 p.m. and will end at 7:45 p.m., at which time, open session will resume at this same location. The executive session will be attended only by the Board of Trustees, and at this time, I'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion made by trustee Cross, seconded by trustee Mitchell. All in favor say aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. We'll see you in executive session at 7 o'clock. It is 7:45. We've returned from executive session. No action was taken, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Mitchell, seconded by trustee Cross. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
I thought we were...
We are adjourned.